So, we're gonna open in the evening. Welcome to the fifth meeting of this year 2017 of the London Masters Planning Board. I am right first chair. I'd like to invite my fellow members, colleagues, and associates, remember.
Alex Whiteside, member.
Hazel Kelly.
Amy Clark, planning director.
Haley Adam Clark.
Ted Schurwitzky, assistant project manager.
April Memmerow, member.
Charlotte Gavagis, member.
Hey, you're busy at this night. We have two, three, four materials tonight, starting at seven oh five here by seven eight. We will actually continue the gathering until the end of the meeting. We will be looking at the project. We have building marketplace at seven ten for site and approval. We have Carrick Realty Trust from seven hundred percent of the property. And we will build it on Hilton Street at seven fifteen at Hilton Homes at seven thirty five. First seven hundred acres of the building. And we will build this town for the sake of this particular modest meeting. Then we can say that we also continue for modest meeting. Those meetings will begin one following the other. We will not stop the hearings prior to the next meeting. So, all hearings that day, this is the required meeting time. Uh, we have, our next meeting starts October twenty second, October thirteenth, and October twenty seventh. All here at seven o'clock. We have several minutes to attend. So, I got an update from October, July fourteenth. We need no formal vote as well to, uh, support the voting. They have all followed the end of the voting changes for me. So, uh, and then continue to change the meeting minutes. Okay, so, please session. On favor, we have April eleventh. People who submitted the last meeting and distributed for comment. Yes, comment today. For the comments today. Right. And do I have a question for the meeting? I got things here. And hard copy for eight twenty five is the final state of our send out. People prepared for tonight's camp. I think, first, uh, to make initial changes. As the changes made by our secretary. Well, that'll be, you'll do that. Okay, we'll do it next time. Oh, you have comments?
I have the two, but they might be different too.
Okay. So, we'll do it next week. But after the comments now. They can, we'll just do it in the next year or next week. We also have, uh, it's ours actually session on this week. But we'll just see if it's, uh, the next day is, uh, right. That's not gonna mean it's, uh, if we go to citizens' meeting, I have the thousand, I'd like to be, uh, this is where I did a project, uh, that's been contemplated to be built in. And it is the Carberry Walcott Property, which is a citizen's association in Camden Avenue. We create, uh, property tour hosted by Jack Dolly in Brooklyn Residential, uh, to review this development plans for property. Interested residents are invited to attend. The tour will commence at four thirty nine, and we'll be back at ten thirty. That's the AM. The Director of the Conservation Commission will conduct a separate site walk of the projects. And then years from eighteen thirty, it's called the four thirty ten. Any of our site walks, that's again on Saturday morning, which is the night, uh, tenth of September. Yep, and, uh, call it probably twelve ten. In addition to the site walk, fourth of the week, we're conducting a balloon test. Colored balloons will float six proposed building locations in order to articulate the proposed visibility of such structures. And the proposed though, and Camden Avenue. The leaf will be posted between six to eight AM on Saturday. And will remain in place for the weekend when the conditions are permitted. Should anyone be in the area or traveling along Camden Avenue for a stay or weekend, they are encouraged to safely float the balloons, which will be flown at the approximate peak of the proposed to take them.
Do you have the address?
The address is sixteen seventy two Camden Avenue, two blocks up. Uh, Carberry, and it's the Carberry Walcott Property. So, one last time, September tenth, we will be open the walk through at nine AM. Hosted by the development. Prior to that, there will be a Conservation Commission walk from eight AM into projects and years. And the test will be conducted all weekend, beginning at eight AM on Saturday. And sixteen seventy two Camden Avenue, we will walk on, in our state. Okay. We're moving to citizens' speak. Anyone has anything they would like to speak to outside of the four public hearings announced in the beginning? You will take your comments now. Good step four response. Uh, I'm gonna ask you to face a little bit towards that camera, just to make sure your comments look good. That's about your difference, Mr. Clark.
Actually, it's getting picked up by them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Did that, your name and address?
Yes, my name is Webster A. Holland. My address is five three three Harlem Street, Milton, Massachusetts.
You have a phone?
Thank you. Uh, and thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening. On August eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, by the state, which was red, and by a train, married, okay. Statement summarized why I support the proposed footwork modern question development, which is why I want to speak. I'm here to announce, to assure you, proposal included, overlay, design, waivers, modifications, will be required in the application at my post. After years of prior proposals, planning board hearings, litigation, tests we follow, and neighborhood upheaval, the neighborhood and developer together agreed upon this development proposal, ten lots in a cluster of this area. The solution to the problem, long in hunger, took close to a year to accomplish, and involved basic funding of land economics. At it, value of land depends upon the use to which the land is used. Ten single-family house lots could support premium costs of bridge across the given district, known as Cooks Brook, and enable the access issues that had been addressed numerous times to be solved and for the health and integrity of the person. The proposed design supports two objectives mentioned frequently in Milton's investment plan. Number one, protection of the small town's star character of the country. Number two, neighborhood involvement and proposal review is enough. I am a director of budget, and a representative of the neighborhood association. As part of settlement, the certification, personally guaranteed transactions involving over three acre parcel of controversial land and one fifty three of those, which has been removed from this development. These extraordinary efforts work for the purpose of providing planning board neighborhood support for the proposal, design, and the application of this project. Facilitate review and contribute to a positive impact for the neighborhood and the town.
I do wish to say that for the market on that market.
Yes, I don't want me to get in line.
And ask for that to be fine, thank you very much.
Thank you. Six, six, six.
Can I also present to citizens' meeting? Casey Noah, ready for seven oh five hearing. I'm gonna open that seven oh five hearing, and I'm gonna ask for a student to that. We will be at the end of the conference, we will be in the city. Second? Okay. Right. We'll go right into our seven ten public hearing, which is the building marketplace, same kind of building. It's rebuilt at ten Basset Street. I think that's the fourth. Good evening. Recognize. How are you? Great thanks, all right.
Good.
Could you say your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Anthony Maturi. I'm a contractor builder, and we worked within part of Milton Marketplace for as long as it's been in existence. I was in the initial building stages, so.
Welcome.
Thank you.
The floor is yours. If you would like to present to us while you're here.
So, we applied for permit to rebuild front entry, uh, the corridor area, which, the main reasoning at the start was to give more of a central egress in and out of the building, rather than the, uh, one at each end of corridor. And also to get the mechanics of how the deliveries are made, so they don't interact with egress of the corridor. So, we initially pulled a permit, uh, we were issued a permit to do that part of it. And as we started getting into the project, because again, we were under, there's a, an eight hundred square foot living entity is what it is, and we were under, there was six hundred plus, or something like that, the area that we were working in. But the storefront, and I did, I, I explained to you guys with some pictures, but I have some other ones as well that might even be, show a little bit more, if you'd like to. I have enough to pass around if you like.
Yes, please.
That's enough to go around here. And, um, there is, these are come. So, back to the initial change. The front work was gonna continue all the way down the, the entire length of the front of the building. But there, again, was only gonna be one set of double doors as a main egress in and out, which is on the initial permit plan. After seeing how the mechanics work, and I was in working on the project in deliveries, we ended up deciding to put a set of double doors on the right-hand end of this front work that we're installing. Yeah, this picture here shows it. So, looking at it, it's on the left. And that double door goes directly now into an existing CBS storage area, which would keep from any of, and in some of these new pictures that I showed, that I just passed out, I went over there and I took pictures of how sometimes racks are stacked in that corridor and what have you. And by putting the double doors there, it now included that storage area on our square foot of the remodeling of the front. So, it brought us up to about eight hundred and twenty-six plus or minus square feet to every remodeling are involved with. But in doing that, it would eliminate any impact in the corridor as far as delivery, storage of any crates or, or product or what have you. And CBS would get their deliveries right to that, looking at it from this angle to the left-hand side, they go in that double door right directly into their storage area. It would not have to go into the car at all for any deliveries received or, then once they receive their deliveries, their, uh, their racks and, uh, pallets and what have you wouldn't have to go back up through the car again. So, this is the main reason we're here on the change of that, and how that expanded our square foot of the remodel in front of this, um, existing storefront. Another reason we did it in, uh, as far as, um, they chose to do it is the, the product, the glass it was in, the existing corridor was number one, had no rating, quarter inch glass. Everything we're putting in is now up to today's, um, our factors, all tempered glass. And the, because of the way the bushes were in all the pictures I showed, they have all the greenery and bushes up against the, what was now T one eleven. The building was starting to deteriorate, and so it was time to make a move and do something. So, what we wanted to do is, and again, with this picture here, it gives you more of a, kind of a look of what we're doing as a finished product. It gives you just more of an open courtyard effect, walking into the, an approach to the store in a more direct route. There's no, we've eliminated this billboard type sign, that's not gonna be. So, it just gives you a cleaner approach to the building. And as far as any type of planting or anything, or to bring anything back as far as any greenery, we had, uh, we had suggested maybe some potted plants here or there and changed with the seasons and stuff as far as that type of thing is concerned. But it was basically for a few reasons. One, to upgrade the front work, get more of an R factor out of the glass, have a cleanup approach to the building, and unobstruct the egress in and out of the building with these deliveries. And also, open up the, the field walking in. Gives you more of a, an open field walking into the project. So, that's why we're here, okay?
All right, those questions, in the drawing board, over here from the public.
And staff?
Sorry?
You have a staff report?
I had a comment, brother. There's no change to any of the loading zones, no change to any of the area lighting, no change to any of the parking in the area. Again, as Tony said, taking out the bushes actually takes the bushes away from the building itself. It also, as you go around the side of the building, adds now that you have better sight lines, that you can see the side of the building, where before, the bushes were up, you didn't know what was in those bushes, who could be in those bushes. It actually opens up that area for public safety components. The safety part two is that there's no longer using the whole of the storage, the storages and the storage area. That's it.
Um, quick and, quick question for you, Bill, on impact to car vehicle surface. Or the, like the way this looks and feels, but is there a impact on storm water here that we should be considering?
I believe that putting in pavers, um, you.
If that's, that's actually not the surface we're gonna put in there, it's just like a mock-up.
No. Tell me, wait.
Yeah, it, if I understand your question, runoff and that type of thing is water. The, we are putting pavers in, so it is something that.
So, the pavers are permeable?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, so there's not an issue of impacting the storm drains or anything, any more than actually it's gonna be going to disperse a little bit better, actually, the way we, we designed it.
I'll send that to me.
Yeah, please.
I presume that's going to remain a handicap accessible entrance?
Correct.
And with egress, reducing the openings from one to two, the egress is not impacted from up above?
No, because, no, because the, the door on the, that was all the way to the left, where this is located, the, it, it actually is a little bit better than what they had before, because now you'll come down the stairs in this room to turn and go out. There's not, somebody, it, it's not as congested. If somebody's coming in and somebody's coming down the stairs, you're right on top of each other. It actually gives you more of a, a cleaner feel going toward this area. And now there's more room because of not having the egress of that outside door opening and closing off. Somebody could be coming down the stairs. So, it's kind of, it, it's, it's a much cleaner, um, approach and egress. And, um, the, uh, we'll have, you know, what's required by code, you know, an exit sign right at the bottom that says it points, but where this is located, it's, it's just steps actually from where the other doors were as well.
Will there be a, a demarcation which, um, would keep pedestrians away from where service is coming in, in that new paved area?
Yes. Yes.
It's just not shown on the, on the, you know?
No, it's not shown there. That's, that, those doors are strictly gonna be, yes, when you say the, where the, um, on the left-hand side, those double doors going into the storage area, as far as, all right, let, let me get this clear. Your question is, as far as people walking up to those doors and thinking that they're egress doors?
Or the entrance or exit, or people are loading there.
Well, they're, number one, they're not gonna be marked. Number two, that, that whole area is all gonna be, it's called a, it's a bronze glass. It's black glass that you can't see through or in. So, there's gonna be no, um, entrance or exit sign down there. And there's gonna be no way that the public will be directed toward that. There's not gonna be a, um, a walkway toward that or anything, direction.
So, the, I think there's a curb there now. Will the curb remain?
The curb will remain. It's not gonna, all that concrete's coming out, though. It's all gonna be part of paves, it will be a granite edge, curb. So, there'll still be a curb, except for where the handicap is, which will be right next to, adjacent to these double doors. But the handicap, because that's where the handicap spaces are right now, actually. It actually works out a little better for the handicap spacing where these doors are.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I'm gonna ask you just to step back. If, let me ask, oh, sorry.
There's, there's a door in the market, right? Have you registered it, Walter?
On the face, that's a.
Not the CBS store, the marketplace store.
Correct.
Which this is, right?
Right, but that's a wall right there. The door is straight ahead. Correct.
The doors of the quarter, uh, I made a mistake, I thought the doors were currently closed. The door here? Is it just not pictured here?
It's not pictured there.
It's not pictured, it's there, correct. It's, it's not pictured there.
Oh, so you're not getting rid of it?
No, 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 no. That's the main egress to the marketplace itself, the food center itself. This is a main egress for the overall.
Yeah, no, no, I just.
Yeah, no, 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 we're not, no, he didn't, no, yeah, no, he, yeah, that, that's remaining.
Okay, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this application from the public? Okay, we have no public comment. Motion or pleasure of course. I would entertain a motion to approve the application for approval of a proposed site plan at ten Basset Street for the Magnosa nineteen eighty-three family trust as submitted.
Second. Oh, sorry, yes, so.
Second?
Okay.
Right, the discussion. On favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving to our seven fifteen hearing. The Carrick Realty Trust Special Permit for Central Avenue Plan, Unit Development one thirty-one Elliott Street. Good evening.
Evening.
Would you please state your names for the record?
Good evening, my, uh, my name is Stephen Connolly, and I'm here tonight with my dad, Jerry Connolly, who are the trustees of Carrick Realty Trust, where the applicants here tonight who applied for a special permit, a site plan approval for a main unit development at one thirty-one Elliott Street, as everybody identifies, at the Henry's Building. I just wanna touch on a few things before we get started, how this, we came to this point. For a few years now, representatives of, for the town have engaged us and encouraged us to revisit the PUD building program as an alternative to the forty B apartment building that we got approved by the Board of Appeals back in two fourteen. And we received a superseding order of conditions from, uh, from DEP last year. We've agreed to do that, and what we have filed tonight with this application, that's been on the website for a while, is essentially a, a number of various plans and renderings, and that's been assembled from the previous application, along with some new plans showing an adjusted building positioning and a new narrative describing the project. We believe that this reflects the application that is, it's two things. It's a complete application, and it's a zoning compliant proposed, given the changes that were passed at town meeting recently to enable this, essentially the, the same framework of the project. This, the big thing is to push it back off of Central Avenue to create public amenities. Tim, if we could go to the existing site plan to get started?
The new?
The new one, yeah. I think, as it comes into focus here, in reading Tim's technical memorandum, the, the number one thing that jumped out at me is the question about the actual lot coverage, because qualifying lot area is critical for determining, you know, building coverage, lot coverage, F A R, et cetera. So, what we have is a plan, is the most updated plan we have from Kenny Anderson, Anderson surveys. And moving from left to right, from the west end, we have a residential lot, a resident C lot on the, on the left side there, the west end of the property. It totals six thousand three hundred and fifty square feet. And the zoning allows that space to be used as parking, which you'll see on the landscape plan, it does just that. The main parcel, which is the middle parcel, the existing building, is twenty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-five square feet. And, uh, the next piece is the strip of land that was taken by the town by eminent domain, twelve hundred and twenty-three square feet. And the Town of Milton lot that was purchased from the MBTA back in, I believe, two thousand and four, is six thousand nine hundred and six square feet. So, the total site is a little more than an acre. The total's forty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-four square feet. For the qualifying lot area, you have to subtract the residency lot, and you get a total of thirty-seven thousand three oh four. So, I know there's some adjustments, adjustments that need to be made to the narrative and things like that. But that's the base qualifying lot area to.
Say that number again, please.
Thirty-seven thousand three hundred and four.
And the total again?
Uh, the total is forty-three thousand six hundred and fifty-four. So, all we did is subtract the residency lot. We could go to the, um, the ground floor plan, Tim. Uh, the basic, the basic program for the building is that we're, what we have proposed is a thirty-eight unit condominium building, four stories in height, with thirty-eight hundred and fifty square feet of business use space on the ground level. So, this plan shows the business use space on the corner of Elliott and Central Avenue. And the thirty-eight spaces, ground level parking under the building, which is entered from Central Avenue. We'll go to the first floor plan. Now, on the first floor, we have, we'll just, we'll wait for the rotation.
All right.
No, no problem. On the first floor plan, we have twenty-eight, uh, uh, under the build, structured parking, under the building parking, again, along with five residential units that, um, are on the, the, uh, Central Ave facade and wrap around the corner onto Elliott Street. And, um, also, which doesn't show on this plan, but it will show on the landscape plan, we have an additional twenty-two space exterior parking lot, which is also accessed from Elliott Street. So, if we go to the, uh, the landscape plan to get a full, get a full view of what we're, what we're doing. So, as you can see, the, with, with the zoning change, we were able to change the configuration of the lot on the west end, the exterior parking lot, from thirty-two down to twenty-two spaces. And I think we have a much more. And I think we have a much more favorable design, much more respectful of the residency lots to the west of the property and also along the Elliott Street location, elevation, I should say. We have a significant green space. So with the residency lots on the Elliott Street side not being impacted. We also have 19 of those spaces in the back parking lot are going to be designated for public spaces. So that's one of the first amenities that I want to touch on. There's going to be public parking, not counted in the business use space now. This is public parking for the use of the entire business district. And the proposal is to have a two-hour limit on each space, because two hours enables patrons to utilize the businesses during the day. And most, the nature of most of those businesses lend to a two-hour program or less. I think there'll be a lot more turnover like than that, because you have the, you have the plate, you have the, you have the barber shop, you have dry cleaners, you know, insurance. You have sort of elderly services thing there. So the turnover is fairly quick. So essentially, not only is it a 19-space lot, but if you extrapolate it out, it's four, it's actually four spaces per block, 19 blocks. So you get four uses out of each space for over an eight-hour period. So you have 76, essentially the use of 76 spaces of that exterior, which is not down there and anywhere in that intersection today. I think that's a significant public amenity. Also, on that side, there's a well landscaped buffer against the residency district lots to the west. A lot more plantings than it was on the original plan. They're specified on the plan there. I think it's a well-designed buffer, along with a six-foot fence. And I believe that the narrative also proposes to consult the neighbor on the west side for some plantings on the west side of the fence as well, which will be implemented. So as you come down from west to east, the courtyard in the middle, what we have, or actually from, yeah, we could start with that, there's a large landscape area abutting the Elliott Street that connects the public parking area to the business use space. It provides some passive public access while respecting the residents' privacy on the site, along with being very aesthetically pleasing. That's a delicate balance, because it is a private-public, in essence, a private-public use with the public parking lot in the west and the business use on the east side of the property. So we want to have access, they can use the sidewalk along the perimeter of the property or they can walk through the, the green space. But we just, they can use it, but we want, we don't want people hanging around there at night. I think that's what we're trying to accomplish. Also, as you go down, you have a courtyard, a well-designed courtyard, actually, with a streetscape to provide a quality pedestrian experience from the business use space down to the entrance to the bike path and to the trolley line. That is another significant change from the original plan. We have, on the northeast end of the property, that, that setback is almost 14 feet from the property line. And when you add that with the existing sidewalk, you're well over, you're about, just about 20 feet from the curb line. And that's on the narrowest point of that setback. So it's very easily, and you have also plantings on the east end. Those planting boxes, we had changed them to have no more than three foot in height for the plantings, because there's going to be display windows on the east end of the property. They're going to be, you know, there'll be a walled backing with displayed windows for, for the commercial space, because all that is is a parking lot behind it anyway. Also, as an amenity, there's going to be four affordable units provided at the site. And, you know, the, I know there's been concern about that after what happened with 36 Central, but the rules and regulations are guided by D H C D and you just follow the protocol to steward in an efficient manner. I think the idea is to have those online at the same time that the market rate units are being sold. So there's no lag. I think that's what people were thinking about. And I just want to touch on as well, comparatively, from this to the 40B building that we have, there's a spread of $200,000 a year in taxes. I think that's a significant consideration here for the, for the use of that site. And also for the quality and life of that area, because town meeting, in this planning board, all the way back to '05 or actually '03 with the first Urban Land Institute study, it's always been contemplated for a mixed-use project on this site, because it completes the business district or closes the circle. And it creates that, that experience that people want, strictly residential use there. I don't think we're getting the highest and best use out of the property as what's available to us at the time, but we're willing to take the second look here. That's really my preliminary comments, and I know there's a lot of documents to be reviewed tonight.
Could you clarify that last statement, not the highest and best use? Which one, which, what are you referring to? You say...
Well, the 40B, without, without the commercial uses, I think that this is the, the best for the town.
Okay, that's what I thought you were saying.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I clarified.
Yeah.
Are you all set with your presentation?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you just clarify a statement about the $200,000 spread? Is that...
Yes, because for, for an apartment, when you operate an apartment building, it usually is predicated on an income valuation. You can, there's going to be a tax base of approximately $150,000 for that property under the 40B that's been approved. With the 38-unit individually deemed condominiums, with the 3,850 square feet of commercial space, which would be sold, leased, et cetera, we'll have taxes out of that, whether it's a meal tax or possibility of a restaurant. You're going to be, you're going to be up around 350 in taxes every year, especially with the comps that are available locally for the sales. Even the most recent stuff I've been looking at is at Adam Street in Dorchester, the Lower Mills facility, they're closer 500 bucks a foot. So there's a significant increase in taxes for this property.
Could you walk through the parking for us and just, again, kind of just detail each floor? What parking is going to be, I understand outside law, the inside...
Yeah, so you have the 22, Tim, if you want to go to the, yeah, we'll go to the ground level. We have 38 spaces on the ground level, which is access from Central Lab. Then you go to the next floor, which is, so now, the only thing that we don't see on here is to the west of that, to this, the left side of this outline here, you'd have the residential, the outside parking lot. So it's the same axis off of Elliott Street, 28 spaces in here. So when you total the 28, 38, and 22, you get 88 parking spaces total for the, for the facility. Now, the parking ratio's changed and the two bedrooms are 1.5 per unit. The one bedrooms are one per unit. You still have the same commercial, which is 250 per space. So you have 15 spaces for the commercial. And then you have the 19 public spaces on the outside. So the way that we were looking at this is to have the ground floor level be parking for the residences with the security, the security door out front off of Central Lab. I think it's critical to have security on that inside parking lot. On the, on the west end, on the exterior parking lot here, and then with the parking on the building, 12 of the spaces for the business use would be inside the building as well, which would, would enable a sticker program to be implemented, again, for security purposes. And then the 22 spaces outside, which would be the 19 fully public, plus three more for the designated towards the business use on, on that property. So that's, that's the concept that we have.
So the 12 spaces for commercial that are in the building...
Yes.
...say a sticker program?
Right.
So is that contemplate, what, stickers for residents or sticker?
Well, what we're thinking...
I was trying to see where the...
What we're thinking is...
Is it retail concept?
It'd be retail, it'd be employees, owners and employees of the retail slash restaurant space.
Okay.
Because it's, you know, more than likely, the commercial space will probably be sold out as condos as well, and they're going to expect parking.
Yeah.
And they're going to expect the parking, that the ratios that are good permanent.
But there's no public access to those spaces for the commercial?
Our position right now would rather not have public access inside the building. I think that's a boundary that we'd like to keep. Again, it's just, it's a comfort level for the people living there.
Would you be open to trying to put a gate in where maybe space 35 to 19 are or something, so that there would be some public access? So... Which floor, Tim? I'm sorry, which floor is the, is the, is the...
Retail, it's this one, it's that one right there.
Okay, so it's the second floor?
Yeah, yeah, coming off Elliott.
So would there be any opportunity to put a gate at like 18 and 5 or something? Just, just...
We had contemplated that and to have the security grade inside. It, it's a possibility. It's, I'm certainly more comfortable with the spaces there if they were open, rather than done on the Central Lab side, a lot more activity down with the trolley and things like that. It's still go back, and we can discuss it some more, but right now, I, I still think the security of that building lends to the security grade on the, on the perimeter wall of the building. Because it depends, and again, it depends, those spaces, I know that the, the idea isn't, talking with the planning staff, that the idea is that we don't want to have empty spaces, whatever you create, you want to use. But this, but the commercial space, depending on what the nature of the business is there, they may, they may need every space they get that's designated to themselves. I, I think it lends to a better program, especially for the, for the sales of the residential units. I think it lends to a better program keeping it on the, on the outside of the building.
I have one more question on parking. So in order to get the ratios that you're talking about, on the public amenities spaces, those 19 spaces are, are they counting, you said they're not counting towards the...
They're strictly public for the entire intersection.
So they're strictly public, so they're not counting towards the ratio for the residential or the commercial?
No, they're not.
Okay.
Can I just chime in there real quick?
Sure.
The, during the days from, is it from eight or nine?
Nine.
From nine to six. Those are open, public, business district spaces. From 6:00 P M. to 9:00 A M., those are for our residents, guests, service providers, et cetera, et cetera. So there's, there's clear delineation of the zone, but during the day, those are business district, public parking spaces. In the evening, they revert back to residential spaces.
But they're not counting towards either ratios, really the, so they're not counting, it's supplemental to the ratio required?
Right, yes.
You know, it's part of the, the...
There's...
These zoning requires 87 spaces.
Right, there's, there's one space for every one bedroom, one and a half spaces for every two bedroom. One-third of the total residential spaces, which is 18, are the extra spaces.
The 19 outside.
Fifteen, yeah, 15 for the business, and then there's one extra to get to 88 or 19.
Okay, so the 18 are included in the residential?
For nighttime use.
For nighttime, I understand.
I misunderstood.
Okay, so they are included in the nighttime ratio. Thank you. Okay, April, you have a question?
Just back to the security issue, that stairwell that you showed here next between space 17 and 18, that goes up to the residential floors?
Tim, can you go to the ground level plan? I'm sorry, it must have been second floor plan then? So that stair exits at this level? Is that right?
So going back to parking just for a second. And on the first floor parking, so the Central Avenue entrance parking. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with your concern about safety, because I totally understand it, and I understand the value of the upstairs units too. This is your entry point. This is really where the residents have to, this is where they're going to go up from their vehicles. On the second floor, they're going to use the same area, plus they have access from the staircase that's connected to the business spaces. So I would ask if there's an opportunity then to think about maybe making this area public for the commercial and have an interior garage door or something, so that this becomes public. Maybe the door, maybe there's a second door that closes at night for the safety purposes. But, you know, I'm just trying to figure out a way to support some of that parking that's counted towards the commercial for actual public use. So just another thought to consider, because I understand you're trying to keep that, that private entrance private.
Yes.
I understand that completely.
If, if we were to implement something like that, Brian, I'd rather go up the other end onto the Elliott Street side.
Because it'd be far out areas.
And also that will keep, you know, even though it's counted spaces towards the commercial, it'll keep the public grouped together.
I understand. And the staircase that's between spaces 25 and 26 on the Elliott entrance, second floor parking spaces, that's primarily egress, I assume? Most people won't be going in there, they'll be going in towards the elevator.
They talk about 17 and 18?
17 and 18?
Yeah, sorry, I keep working at the wrong page.
Well, they do, that, that, you know...
So mostly, you think people will go up?
People who park down, they will go up that way. Unless they want to take the elevator.
Okay, thank you again. Any other questions from the board?
They just stayed in the pocket of curiosity, all commercial spots. They, that surprises the public's use of the commercial area and the...
We have to have, we have to have three more outside?
Three more outside, yeah, 15.
15 total, yes.
You'd have to work for a restaurant or was it a restaurant?
What's that?
What if, what if a restaurant, they would have to pay?
They would have to come back to the board for approval.
They'd need more spots over there.
Theoretically, yes, yeah. But that's a use that would have to get reviewed here for it to be approved.
Okay, anything else from the board before we hear from the public? All right, I think we're probably going to hear from the public, so I'll ask you both to step back.
Sure.
And we'll open up the public question of the hearing. So I'm going to just recognize people as they raise their hand. So I'll recognize the gentleman in the front row, blue shirt, and then we'll go down, we'll make sure, everyone will have a chance to speak. We want to recognize them.
Good evening, my name is Al Petrus. I live at 36 Central Avenue, number four in Milton. I am one of the residents and trustees of the residents at Brook Hill, and I'm glad you're talking about parking. And I know I've spoken about it before. We are diagonally across from where the Henry site will be located. And my concerns, as a trustee and having lived here, is really with the proposed parking plan. In the five years that our building has been open, parking has been the most difficult situation that we've dealt with, with some of the, I'm going to say Kafka rules that we've given and, and trying to take and manage our parking area and explain it to people. So I'd like to submit some comments, and I've talked to Tim and some others about this in the past. First, this proposed development, which is great, and it couldn't have happened, can't happen any sooner. You know, this is not negative in any way, it should have been built years ago. It's got two thumbs up from myself in particular. But this proposed development's going to be home to 38 families. They're going to live there, this is their home. This is where they live, this is where they take and spend their time. And primary consideration for parking should be given to the residents, their guests, and their service providers. First and foremost, it's their home. Think of that when you're thinking of the rest of the items we're talking about. The simplicity in the parking plan really is paramount. The more you move spots around and said, let's put people here and let's put people there and break up the contiguous parking, the more complicated it gets, the more you have to explain the rules to people and constantly explain the rules on a regular basis. It's likely to fail and cause problems. And people do not read signs, plain and simple. We have some of the clearest signs you can have in our parking area. It's Helen Keller's driving and not reading any. The idea of public parking is nice, and, but it presents multiple problems for the homeowners' association, including enforcement and some liability concerns, which need to be addressed, because you have public parking on your private property, who's liable should something happen to a person whose parking there or their vehicle? To that end, I've categorized five categories of parkers, and I'm presenting them in priority order, and this is my humble opinion. Number one, the main priority should go to the 38-unit occupants. And I have notes to share with you, so this is all written down. Number two, consideration should go to their guests and their service providers. Number three, the customers and the employees of the businesses in the building. Number four, handicap parking. And the lowest priority should be really for public parking for businesses in the area. In reviewing the plans, the narratives, and spending time with the planning department, I would suggest the following, and I'd like your idea. First floor, the 38 spots on the first floor would be reserved for unit occupants only. Each unit gets one dedicated parking spot, thus 38 spots, 38 units. Everybody's happy, there should be an easy choice. If you don't live there, you don't park there. Enforcement is easier, it really is that simple. Couple of quick points, and these are lessons learned. The access to the garage on the first floor, if you consider garage... The access to the garage on the first floor, if you consider garage doors, we had problems with our flood insurance. We considered garage doors on, on our building, and the garage entrances, but it didn't allow water to egress, egress in the flood plan, and it significantly raised the premium that we would have to pay. A simple farm gate or something that allows water to come in and out, if you're considering that, but just, just a lesson learned. It significantly increased our, would have increased our flood premium. One other thing that was done and should be considered in this building, and this has been a problem for us, and we had to go to the planning board, we had to spend the expense to update our master deed. Each of the spots in the garage were deeded to a particular condominium unit, and it made it very difficult to move people around and to, to accommodate their choices. Every time we wanted to take and make a move for a unit owner, it had to be a separate agreement, or we had to actually change, come with the planning board, get the plans approved and changed, submit the master, you know, get the lawyer to update the master deed and submit it to the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. Lot of cost and time, a lot of problems. My suggestion would be on those spots is really to kind of deed it to the association, let the homeowners association deal with the assignment of spots, and I'll talk about handicap preferred parking a little bit later on as I go through. We talked about thirty-two two-bedroom units and six one-bedroom units. There's a plan for secondary parking spaces for unit regents equal fifty percent, or sixteen or eighteen spots the number has. If you're on the second floor, Tim, could we go to the second floor?
You're there.
You are, okay. Those are spots that people in the building need, and they're expecting, especially if they have a secondary car. So you have fifty percent spots available for a second vehicle or the homeowners to come, and they expect that parking space to be there. So my suggestion would be to look at the spots in the closest to the central avenue side, dedicate those spots to that secondary parking, so when people come home, they're not searching the first floor, can't find one, have to back out, go up the second floor, try to figure out which spot is available, put a contiguous block right up front, makes it easier. You can provide, you know, a gate if you really want to, but just mark them all, residents only, simplify it. Yep, no, not that long. You also need to provide twenty-four hour parking for guests and service providers. With thirty-eight units, there will often be family and friends visiting overnight or for multiple days. And they cannot be forced to keep moving their car or finding parking elsewhere, given the current plan. My recommendation would be to designate ten or twelve of those spots in the garage for this purpose, for guest and service provider. You know, if you look at the plan as it is today, some of that is outside in that public parking area, and there's a two-hour limit. If you've got people, your aunt staying, or your uncle staying, you're saying, oh, you're in that spot, you have to move the car every two hours or find another thing, it's not practical. Again, it's our house, if I'm a homeowner there, it's our house, and I really need to provide for our needs. There's numerous handicap, oh, the customers of the businesses should probably use the outside twenty-two spaces, and that should also be the public area. I would take and avoid putting any public parking or business parking inside as much as possible, because it's just going to create issues. They, you need to be, if you're going to do that, they need to be contiguous at the front and clearly marked. Again, that simplicity of the parking rules is key, because you're not having somebody trying to figure out where everything's going, and you're just going to raise problems. And those outside spaces, again, should change to guests of the residences between six P M. and nine A M. With thirty-eight people, you can imagine there's lots of people coming over to visit, and they need parking to take and, and visit their friends and family. There's numerous handicaps, spots designated in the building. It's been our experience that, in the way that they're configured in our building, they're almost one-hundred percent wasted all the time. If you have thirty-eight residents, and you have thirty-eight spots down in that garage level, everybody's getting a parking spot, including someone with a handicap placard, you're expecting with this plan, six people who live there to have handicap placards. That's not necessarily going to be the case, and if they don't have them, and they're designated handicap only, nobody's going to park in those spots, they're literally going to waste. What we would do in our association, if we were able to rewrite the rules, is to say that the handicap spots, especially if you go down to the first floor with the thirty-eight spots, is that the homeowners association, especially if they're not deeded individually to units, can take and say, if someone does have a handicap placard, we can rearrange parking to give them a preferred spot that is more accessible for that handicap car. And again, if you can go up to six of those spots or more, the homeowners association would probably make the best combination. To leave them designated as handicap only, literally, three spots, almost one-hundred percent wasted in our building. Three prime spots. Going back in the second floor garage, again, if you're going to take and dedicate those sixteen spaces for the secondary parking, I would consider the same handicap issue. You have handicap parking, but if there's no handicap, it should probably be assigned to, you know, general parking or unit owner. If somebody does come in with a second car and has a handicap placard, then dedicated or preferential parking can be given to them. Otherwise, you're wasting the space. In the guest and service area, that I would keep one or two spots dedicated for handicap parking, guest or service people more likely to have it, you cannot predict or predetermine those parking requirements as you can for actual people living in the building and knowing their situation. And the same thing with the outdoor parking, I would keep several handicap spots out there, because again, you can't predetermine the needs of people coming as you do with the people actually living in the building. So, I'm going to take and revise my one comment here. We realize that parking may not be a major concern to you, but obviously parking is a major concern in the neighborhood, and that people see the opportunity to use this private development, people's homes, as a public parking area. It's a bonanza, oh, look, we got a whole bunch of public parking space. But I urge you to stop and think like a resident in their homeowners association. They're the ones that have to live with it in management. Over the five years, we had to deal with the following. Nobody really understands, except for the trustees and the building residents, the complex parking requirements in our, in our lot. What's, who's assigned to what, even though it's clearly marked? People go in it, they don't read the signs. The clear signage is not necessarily red, the police have been very lax, and in some case, one or two cases, it was not a good situation as far as enforcing our parking problems. And I have two anecdotal items that come to what our life is. If we call for a tow truck, which is clearly marked, here's our towing company, the phone number, it takes too long for the tow truck to get there. Usually the offending vehicle is gone before the tow truck even gets close to our house. So our approach that we take now is, we're clearly marked no trespassing, is to call the Milton Police Department and report them as a trespasser. The police are much quicker to respond, and since it's marked no trespassing, it's some, it's a much easier way for us to enforce this. We often get, oh, I'm only going to be just a while, to the people when we say, you know, you're not supposed to park here, and our response is, fine, we'll come over to your house and park in your yard for a while, then too. It's, you're parking on our private parking, in our yard, and people just don't realize that. You're going to have similar situations over at the new property. And it's going to lead to some neighborhood discord. I can tell you a couple of shop owners who are going to be problematic, I can tell you a couple of neighbors who are going to be problematic. We had one neighbor who recently moved was extremely problematic. She would go into the businesses in our building and yell at customers who exceeded the time limit on the parking spots on the public streets, who parked in our yard, in legitimate spots. She would roam our property, and when we finally kicked her off, she wandered adjacent property of our neighbors, monitoring the parking and, and coming in and making complaints when she was not justified in doing that. The trustees actually met twice, determined if we want to take out a restraining order on her, because she was rude, offensive, and quite literally wrong in most cases. It was not a pleasant situation. It has been resolved because she's moved. So, I do close saying, remember that the people who eventually move into this building will have to live with their decisions, your decisions, it's their home, don't forget that.
Thank you. Anyone else want to? You've got one.
I'm giving you all.
Tim, okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak to its application in the select, Conlon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Katie Conlon, I'm the chair of the Board of Selectmen, and I'm here tonight on behalf of our board to support the mixed-use development at the Henry's site. And I'm going to speak very generally, not to the specifics of the application that's before you, but just to the issue of the town's property, and also some of the key reasons that we're supporting mixed-use development. As I believe all members of this board know, there's been a very long process here before various town boards and committees. The mixed-use development is pursuant to the Central Avenue planned unit development, and that's consistent with the Urban Land Institute's recommendation many, many years ago, about a dozen years ago. And also several town meeting votes, going back to two thousand and six, when we first amended the, adopted the planned unit development zoning for this area, which included two other properties, but the Henry's building was the big anchor site in the district. We had several votes to amend the zoning, including most recently in February of two thousand and sixteen, when town meeting voted unanimously to amend the zoning to make some of the changes that are reflected in this application possible. The town owns approximately eighty-three hundred square feet at the site, right at the corner of Central Avenue and the trolley tracks. And the Board of Selectmen is working with the Connellys to reach an agreement to transfer the town's property to Carib Realty Trust. We're not there yet, but we believe we're close, and we hope to have an agreement in the very near future. The mixed-use development is supported by the Selectmen because it will provide shared public parking, which we've been talking about, four affordable housing units, tax revenue, and what we think is very important is commercial space in a business district. No one knows better than the planning board that Milton does not have a lot of commercial space, so if we can preserve some space in a key business district, we think that would be very beneficial to the town overall. And the big thing to keep in mind here is that whatever happens at this site, barring some casualty, is going to be around for fifty, a hundred years, a long time, so we'd like to really get this right. We thank you for all of the efforts that you're all putting into this, especially Mr. Alex Whiteside, who's been, who I've worked closely in, working with the Connellys, and we encourage you to hopefully issue a special permit that will permit a mixed-use development to be built at this site, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If anyone else who wants to speak to the application? Oh, okay, all of a sudden, everybody, sir in the back, sir in the back, blue shirt.
Thank you for hearing me, my name is Chris Zane, resident in Milton.
Can you give your address, please?
Sixty-two Avalon Road.
Thank you.
My concerns for this project are threefold. The first is the potential problem for pests and rodents upon demolition for the current structure. I believe that the preventative measures that need to take place before the demolition takes place need to be strengthened so that the pest problem does not become overly burdensome to the entire surrounding community. Second, my second concern is with respect to interruption of the trolley service. I believe any plans that are ultimately accepted should make sure that the interruption to the trolley service is severely reduced so that the community travelers on the trolley are not inconvened by this project. Third, I believe that the facade of the building should be better in keeping with the community or in the surrounding neighborhood, be a brick facade, opposed to, I believe, as the current proposal, a, a yellow vinyl siding facade. Those are my three concerns for the current project that I proposed.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I saw a hand in the back there.
Good evening, my name's Peter Dunn, I live at eighty-four Franklin Street, which is all the way on the other side of town, so I was asked here by Scott McKay, who's a precinct two town meeting member. I'm here to also just address the potential rodent issues. East Milton has a well-known rodent infestation that's going on right now. The Board of Health has, has tried to do what it can, but it has its resources strained, so it's largely fallen on homeowners to, to take their own mitigation efforts. And so we would basically, I just wanted to say that with respect to this plan, whatever best practices are, they should really be implemented, including post-completion monitoring and remediation. I definitely think this project is a very good idea, but based on what we've seen in East Milton over the last eighteen months to two years, we'd strongly encourage that best practices be adopted and, and the situation be monitored, both during construction and afterwards. Tell me, I have a second.
Thank you. Mr. Mullin, his hand raised?
Good evening, Peter Mullin, Nineteen Gaskins Road, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two. I think somebody earlier mentioned that it's been a long process, and it certainly has. I'm very optimistic that this plan can be approved, and it'll be a great addition to the neighborhood. It'll certainly be a great addition when compared with the existing structure. And I would express on behalf of the neighborhood our appreciation of the efforts of Katie Conlon and Alex Whiteside with regard to this project. I have a few questions with regard to the project, and they're kind of tied into the narrative statement that's submitted in support of the application. On page one.
Just, just speak, I'm going to have you ask a question, then I'll answer them all, I'll give the applicant a chance to answer them for you.
Okay. On page one of the narrative, in the paragraph A, the site, it says, the applicant has a memorandum of agreement with the town regarding the town's process, giving the applicant adequate control of the site. My understanding of what Chairman Conlon just told us was, they've been talking about an agreement, they think they're close, but there isn't such an agreement yet. I think the board may want to get that agreement, and I think that should be publicly disclosed. My understanding is that in connection with this application, the applicant has asked for a fee waiver, and has asked that the fee that they paid several years ago in connection with the prior application should be considered the fee for this one. I'm not sure what I think of that, but I don't have any idea of the dollar amount that's involved, and I think it would add to the public understanding to know how much of a fee is being requested to be waived. On page five, in the, in the narrative, there's a paragraph down at the bottom, determination of amenities. And my understanding is that as part of this application, the applicant is seeking additional, I think it's one additional unit, condo unit in the development, based on the providing of amenities to the public. And the two amenities that are mentioned here are the green space on the Elliott Street side, outside kind of the main entrance into the building, and then the provision of the nineteen parking spaces. I understand the concerns that have been raised by the people in thirty-six Central Avenue about parking and spaces, and I think this development is somewhat different than thirty-six Central Avenue, because these spaces are, these proposed amenities are being used to get additional density in the development. I think those parking spaces do need to be public parking spaces. This topic is addressed in, in at least two different places in the application. Here in the determination of the amenities paragraph, it suggests that this green space is going to be, you know, a public amenity. And I think in one of the drawings, there's even a couple of benches in there. But in other portions of the application, it says that there's a prohibition on the consuming of any food other than food purchased in a, in a restaurant that was located in the building. the building. If people buy something at the plate and want to take it over there to eat, it seems to me that should be a permitted use if this is an amenity that's being used to get additional density in the development. And I think that's something that the board may want to look into. I also think that there's issues and questions with regard to the nineteen parking spaces. I think that truly is, is something of public value from this development. Parking is a major problem in, in that business district. These will be a net plus. But I think that the question becomes, how do you maintain that those spaces are in fact available to the public? As I understand the narrative here, in at least one place, they're proposing that parking rules would be adopted by the condo association. And I'm not sure that the condo association is going to have much different interests in the parking than the public is. So that, I don't know whether there can be some kind of a lien or some kind of a right-of-way or some kind of, I think there needs to be some kind of publicly enforceable right to those parking spaces. I'm a little bit concerned on the nine-to-six limitation, particularly if a restaurant was to go into the business space. If we have to live with nine-to-six, at least we should be able, there should be some way of enforcing and having a legal right to public access to those spaces during that On page seven, in the narrative, there's a paragraph on traffic. I would point out to the board that the principal traffic study that submitted, it was written in February of 2011, and is based on some counts that were done, I think, in December of 2010. There was an update done briefly in 2012, that was kind of a recalculation that submitted, and there's a memorandum from 2014. Traffic has gotten more congested in that area, particularly in the morning, I think, or in the rush hour, both morning rush hour and evening rush hour. I think the board, I don't know if the board has any access to any expertise within the town with regard to evaluating those studies. At one point, there was talk of possibly studying whether a traffic light in this intersection would be helpful, useful or not. I don't know, and I'm not sure if people would have a firm view on that one way or the other. Sometimes I like to make things worse. But it seems to me that the traffic studies are somewhat old here, and I think the board should reach out. I don't know if we have any traffic engineers within the DPW or any other access to traffic On page eight, in the carryover paragraph, with regard to future traffic, the, the narrative says, "Applicant notes that the Board of Appeals has issued a comprehensive permit for a portion of the site which would allow a higher volume of traffic on Elliott Street than would be produced under this permit." I believe that that's a reference to the Forty-B project. I think the board should get clarification as to what that's a reference to. And I don't think that that's the, the applicable point of reference that you should take with regard to traffic concerns. I'd point out at the bottom of that page in paragraph three that's labeled "shared parking," this is the point where the application says, in the, in the last sentence of that paragraph, "The condominium association shall make appropriate rules and regulations to ensure compliance with these requirements, the parking requirements." Again, I don't think they're the proper body to be deciding what the rules should be with regard to that parking. On page nine, in paragraph N3, "Maintenance and Rules of Use," this relates to the landscaping. It imposes on the condo association the obligation to maintain the plantings, the watering, to replacing dead plants, to keeping the area free of litter. And it says, "The Elliott Street green space during daylight hours shall be subject to reasonable rules and regulations which prevent loitering and uncivil behavior." Again, I believe the assumption there is that the condo association is going to be the people adopting those rules. I'm not sure that they're the appropriate people to be doing that. Finally, on page thirteen in the narrative, there's a paragraph talking about "Construction Management Plan and Time for Construction." As I understand the usual practice before the Planning Board, you would issue a special permit, and one of the conditions of your permit would be that the applicant get a building permit from the building commissioner, and that if there are construction things that need to be worked out, that they, they would be worked out with the DPW and the building commissioner. I think there's a huge number of issues with regard to this project, with regard to demolition, and then with regard to the construction and the management of that construction. I don't think that, you know, my understanding is that this board is not the proper board to be dealing with those issues. I think that's really going to be the building commissioner and the Board of Selectment, perhaps as the supervisors of the, the building commissioner and the DPW director. I mean, I think residents are very concerned about rodents. There's concern about whether or not there's hazardous material in that building. I know that I personally observed maybe five or six years ago that there were people in hazardous material suits removing material from the building into an unmarked, or at least it didn't have a name of a company on the side, building, a truck. And then later, you know, we were told that whatever was hazardous in the building has been removed. I think people are going to want more information before the building is going down about, to assure themselves that there aren't hazardous materials that are going to be dispersed with the wrecking of this building. I know that there's an issue about underground oil. I attended the Board of Selectmen's meeting a couple of weeks ago, when the demolition contractor said, you know, "The water has been pumped out of the low-level basement." Well, yeah, it was pumped out, but since then, there's been a giant hole in the roof and it's raining. So there's water back in the hole there, and we don't know, you know, what the condition of that material is. I flagged these things only to say that this board should be very specific in your permit, requiring that there be approvals by the building commissioner, and that hopefully we'll be able to have a public process with regard to dealing with people's concerns. Again, I, I don't want to downplay the optimism. I think there is real optimism in the neighborhood that finally this project will move, that finally this building will be down, and it will be replaced with something that's an asset to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this application from the public?
Should we say how much the fee was, or are we weighing on that?
Yeah, well, yeah, we can go through each of those questions quickly. Mr. Conlon, would you go forward for me so we can ask some of them of you? Some of them we can probably answer, but there were...
I want to start with the last one first, close to the last one. I, I take issue with Mr. Mullin, and I don't know what he's insinuating, stating that we are there with unmarked trucks taking material out of the building. That's outrageous statements to be making. We're a family business here, we, I live in town, people are watching this tonight, it's outrageous. Everything that was done at that site for abatement is registered with DEP and with the town of Milton, and done by RIS contractor, Rob Oppenheimer, who was at that meeting last week.
Absolutely.
You know, I put up with this four years ago, I'm not doing it again.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Appreciate that.
Anything to do with the building, no problem.
Yeah, well, kind of, you hear, it's outrageous. The, the, we think that the Selectmen, your negotiations with the Selectmen and Katie Conlon's statement give them an adequate interest to proceed with the permit. And obviously, any permit would say you've got to get actual title, but as far as proceeding is, there is inadequate interest in. I think the fee was about two thousand dollars?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six hundred dollars.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six hundred dollars.
Can I just make an answer or a comment about the handicap parking space when we get to it?
Yep, I'll come back to that, scroll through these, and then we can look back to that. Do you have any comments on the green space and parking space comments that came up as far as the amenities that are going back to the comments about the parking need to be public and the comments about the green space need to be public? Do you want to respond to that?
The, the space on Elliott Street, like I talked about originally, is that it, there's a, there's a balance that has to be struck with the, it's a private-public type situation. And I call it passive. It's a pass, it's from the, from the public spaces down to the business district. They can use either the sidewalk on Elliott, or they can use the, the walkway provided on-site. I, I have no interest in having people buying lunch at the plate and then having their wrappers over in the bill, in, in the courtyard up on Elliott Street. I mean, that's just, that doesn't make any sense to me.
But the Central Avenue streetscape is going to have benches.
That's exactly right.
Going to have what? Bensets.
Bensets.
That, that type of activity could be in the courtyard, where the business, where the business use is, and then all the way along Central Avenue down to the tracks. There's plenty of space for benches and for that type of activity.
And that is an additional amenity that's being provided because you moved the building back.
So I guess what I would ask then is, we make that clear, we make that distinction clear that we've, you've created what I'll call, better term, park area in this, in this area, and the green space is really passively not intended to be a park. I think it's important that you make that clear as far as the application, but I understand, I think we all understand now what the intention is. As far as the traffic goes, I think we'll discuss that, unless you have something you want to say, we'll discuss that as part of our discussions. And then the construction management plan...
What I will say about the traffic is that there is sixty-five spaces under, under the Forty-B.
Yeah, if you clarify that, that's for us.
Yeah, there's fifty-seven units permitted. There's six space, surface spaces, also accessed from Elliott Street, pretty much where the entrance point is right now for the exterior parking lot. Right on the corner where the building juts out, when you're going from left to right, where the building comes out, the, the left side of the business space, right about there is where there's an entrance that goes under the building with a sixty-five space parking structure underneath the five-story building. So the entry, exit and entry is strictly on the Elliott Street location, it's about fifty-five feet from the stop sign. That went through the traffic study, it went through a peer review, I think it was Conlon Associates hired by the Board of Appeals to do the review. This program actually distributes the, the traffic flow. You have thirty-eight units off of Central Avenue. You also have the, with the streetscape, with the building pushed back and with the planters, when you, when you, when you enter, especially exiting the, the parking structure, there's a nice sightline there, whether it's pedestrians or traffic coming forward, you have plenty of depth to be able to catch people coming out. And then also, and then you have essentially half the traffic is on the Elliott Street entrance, where you have plenty of room for a queue. In tradit, any of the studies that were performed down there, whether it's for the Forty-B or for this over the years, Elliott Street has the least count. So I think it even lends better to have the commercial spaces up on that end. By, by far, the least amount of traffic is on Elliott Street itself, moving from west to east into the intersection. The intense parking, or traffic is on Central Avenue. You know, and what, what helps with us with, with this plan is that the trolley creates a natural break. People stop, trolley's coming, there's people stop naturally before they trot, before they cross the tracks, especially coming in from Boston into Milton, so it's, I, I think it's an easier traffic pattern.
Do you have a construction management plan that could be submitted as part of the application, or could you, could you prepare one?
We, we could generate one.
Okay, sure.
It was a suggestion that the one for Thirty-six Central Avenue was a good one.
I agree.
That's right.
Okay, great.
Mr. Guy, has a comment?
Oh, sorry, yes, on the handicap parking spaces in terms of the number and location, I just wanted to make a comment to the resident who spoke. Those are dictated by code and by civil rights legislation, the American with Disabilities Act and CMR 570, I believe it is, is a, is a handicap code requirement. And there is really no leeway in terms of where they're located. They have to be next to the path of accessible entrance to either the business or the residences. So they, they can't be moved further away. I just want to point that out.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I, I want to point out, just one more thing.
Sure.
As far as control of the site has to lie with the condominium association. I don't agree with anything Mr. Mullin said about having a public process involved on private property like that. The special permit can be written, given the condominium association control, they have to abide by the special permit to be in compliance. That's what it's all about. And those spaces can be signed, and what you need, we, we have a large parking lot in Dorchester, it's, it's a simple program, you have a toll program. And after the first week, nobody parks there, it's not supposed to be there, it's that simple.
No, I think there, there's not, I think the special permit really serves as the a lien, a lien of state, if the special permit is the lien, your lien is...
And those spaces, those spaces can be controlled, can be controlled properly, as long as you have an active toll program.
Well, the special permit will require them to be...
Right, and have a, just have a, a local company that's willing to be by there on a regular basis, that's all you need.
Okay. Before we go on, anybody else wish to speak from the public, because I think we may have interrupted that? No? Okay, great. All right. So I neglected to allow Tim to speak before public, so I want to make sure that Tim doesn't have any comments, because I didn't give staff an opportunity to speak.
So I had, I distributed a technical review that planning staff had informed, that's gone to the board, that's gone to the applicant. A fair amount of what the applicant's presentation was tonight addressed. What I think were the major issues that came up in the, in the technical review, and this, this document, for, for those of you in the audience who watch from home, is on the Planning Board website, townmilton.org, you can go to Planning Board, Current Projects, One Thirty-One Elliott Street, this document is up there. I'll, I'll just read the sort of introductory paragraphs so that everyone knows what, what this is all about. The following technical review identifies issues for which the bylaw, Section 3J of the Milton zoning bylaws directs the Planning Board to make a determination, issues for which the applicant has requested modification of the bylaw's requirements, questions for the applicant, and deficiencies in the plans, documents, or the materials in the application. So my, my first big note was, was on the issue of lot area, which Steve addressed earlier. There were just a, a bunch of different numbers on lot area in the application, and he clarified earlier that thirty-seven thousand three hundred four, that some of the different parcels was the number that we were going to go with. And, and that, that number's important just because FAR requirements, lot coverage requirements, you just need to have a consistent number, which, which we do, and I'll go back and do the math, but I think that math checks out, it's just a matter of having a consistent number. Thank you. Note two is the issue of the elevation of the principal floor. The recent zoning change, I believe it was in February twenty sixteen, special town meeting, one of the changes to section three J dealt with the issue of the basement and the principal floor being more than the same. And the requirement is that if, um, if a significant portion of the principal floor lies beneath the, I believe it's post-construction grade of the footprint, then the principal floor can be considered the basement. And it's important because if the principal floor is a basement, you can have four stories above, and if it's not, you can only have three stories. Because the, the zoning also requires some restriction that four stories is, is the maximum, the basement doesn't count as a story, so that's important. Steve provided a, and I, I, I distributed this, Julia distributed it earlier, a revised building height plan that you all should have, I'm going to pull mine out right here, which includes calculations for the elevation and the grade of the building. And it's also got this section diagram on the bottom, which I'll bring up on the big screen, which should give you an indication of how much of that, that principal floor, which is the ground floor where the business is located and where the, I'm sorry, I was just trying to make eye contact, I don't have it up yet. It should give you an indication of, of how much of that principal floor is beneath grade.
Beneath the average grade.
Beneath the average grade, yes. This is just, uh, of course, I didn't rotate it yet. The, the, the zoning just says a significant portion, it's up to the planning board to determine what a significant portion means. And so, this is, this is the section diagram that I'm talking about, it's got the elevations matched up with, with the sections, so you can see each building face where, um, where that's below the average grade, the existing grade, the proposed grade of the, of the finished structure. So you'll be able to make that determination. That, that was probably my biggest concern going in, and, and hopefully this is something, you just got it today, so you might need to take a little time to review it. But, but that should be helpful in making that determination. I had a note on, on parking, a lot of those issues have been raised by both residents and by, um, members of the board. The issue of, of how that visitor, guest, public parking gets regulated, the design in terms of where the security gates are going to be, the contiguous nature of the residential versus the commercial spots. These are all issues that have been raised and, and, and I think need to be, it's in everyone's best interest for those to be figured out. I, I think that if it's, if it's a well-designed parking scheme, you reduce the need to have signage and enforcement that can be complicated and, and messy. And then there, you know, I, I don't know if you're interested in me going through point by point each one of these, each one of these notes in the memo. A lot of them sort of refer back to the big notes in terms of lot coverage and, and principal floor. There's a few determinations that the, the planning board needs to make about the amenities. Parking is amenity, the open space is amenity, this is, these are PEC two, floor area bonuses, unit bonuses. So these are all in, um, in this document. Let me just see, the issue with the, the security cameras, they're not placed on the plan. That's something that I think the applicant should be, should be on the record as, as to where the security cameras are going to be placed. They are described narratively in, in the application narrative, I think it would be a, a good interest in knowing where they're going to be. The issue of the, of the setbacks, the zoning requires third and fourth story setbacks, but the entire building has been set back from, from the curb in a way that kind of negates the need for that. But again, that's a determination of the planning board needs to explicitly make. That's really, yeah, I mean, a lot of, a lot, a lot of the stuff has come up, I, I would encourage you to, to, to continue to read through this and, and, and let this be a guide for your discussions, because again, there's a lot of bits, and you can see it in the matrix, which ties each of these notes to specific clauses in the zoning. You know, the, the zoning does require you to make, you know, determinations about, is, is an amenity satisfactory, is, is a setback satisfactory? Let's just put those out.
Do you have a copy of this?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have a question for him.
Yes.
Is the, is the green line up there, is that the average exterior gray?
Steve?
Yes.
Average elevation of building footprint, that's what, that's the estimate of, of when it's constructed.
Post, just the post, right.
Footprint will be at twenty-nine thirty-five.
Go back to the previous sections yourself? Or you just enlarged it?
So this is, this is the Central Ave facing elevation? This is the Elliot Street facing elevation?
So a question for the applicant, there are two comments that are on here about items that are missing from the plan. I assume your intention will be to mark these up on a plan for the final, to attach to the final special permit? Should a special permit be, be issued or drafted?
Yes, once, yes.
I understand we don't, we understand that the investment doesn't want to be made until we know if there's going to be a special permit. But assuming there's going to be a special permit, the final application would have a plan included and address these deficiencies, so to speak.
Any issues that need to be.
Great, thanks.
What do you mean by the final application?
The fin-, it's not final application, excuse me, the final, I mean, the, the final, final permit.
What, 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 construction project.
Correct, yes, construction project, thank you.
We could get out of the way, the cameras, if you want it on record, the cameras will cover the entrances, both on Elliot, Central, two on Elliot actually, on the parking lot area, and then on the main entrance.
This one, is it this one?
No, the main entrance going in right there, and then also on, on Central Avenue, so there'll be three.
Another comment that came up that I wanted to ask about, the exterior finish of the building proposed?
Is brick on the first floor, hardy plank or equal? No, no vinyl side, okay.
Thanks.
An appropriate trim to, if you want to show the facade, especially the Elliot Street elevation. If you can get a better idea.
On, on that, on terms of the materials and the trim and the windows, et cetera, in the prior application, there was a memo from the architect at the time that described these in greater detail. So I'm thinking that this could be something, greater detail could be placed in special permit language as well, in terms of that it wouldn't be mine, oh, you know, certain materials, certain dimensions on trim, et cetera, certain proportions of windows and all of that.
Yes.
So, okay.
The special permit will describe exactly what that's going to, that's.
Would you give that material to Jim?
I can.
I think that would be good, because otherwise, no one might ever find it.
It was all on the town website at one point in time, but the, uh, the thing is, it's a little bit out of date too. I mean, it doesn't reflect exactly that, but my point is, it could be described in words.
Yes.
So maybe you, along with Tim, could come up with the language that they could help describe that.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Any else from the applicant for this evening?
No.
Okay.
I have a suggestion.
That would be great.
I suggest that Kim and I work on a proposed permit. We've got the issues and addressed them, and get it out by the Friday before our next meeting. So that we'll have something to discuss then, after having read it.
I'd be happy to offer my comments on having words that describes the architecture.
That would, give them to Tim, that's why I suggested that you, you get them to Tim.
Do you have the DPW director here? I don't know if you have any questions.
We do have a DPW memo here. Do we have any questions on that memo, or comments on that memo?
I do want to make a comment though, just a general comment about the application, I don't know if that's now or after we hear from DPW.
We'll come back to that, okay?
I think that, uh, we understand that having moved the building, the drainage is going to be different. The CONCON is going to approve the drainage, and certainly, we can, uh, we're not going to approve drainage that hasn't been approved by the DPW or the CONCON. But I can think it can be addressed in the, uh, in the permit.
So we can basically defer to CONCON.
I think that, I think that we can do that.
I think that's a good solution to the concerns that were raised, which are legitimate, but will be resolved as part of the CONCON application.
Just in terms of Tim's comment about.
Thank you for the DPW director for attending, I appreciate it.
Sorry. In terms of Tim's comment about the step back or moving the building, I, I think that, I would like to say from an architectural perspective, an urban design perspective, I think moving the building over accomplishes a reduction in the apparent height on the sidewalk, which I think is what the intent of that language was in the beginning. And it also has the added benefit of increased, um, public domain, if you will, which I think is going to be a great asset to the commercial district. So having the commercial use, and tying that whole corner together as commercial use, just the way outside the plate in the Sprey Devon has nice outdoor space, that's the kind of outdoor space we're going to get with this development. So I think the other added benefit is the footprint of this building is quite a bit smaller than the existing one, and having the green space on Elliot Street, I think is going to open up that whole entrance into the, into the Central Ave area. So I think, um, we can come up with language that will address some of the concerns that were raised and some of the concerns I think that Tim raised, concerns raised by the public and by Tim, in the language of a special permit.
I, I agree with Joe, I just hate to be a stickler about this, so.
You've done an excellent job, and I, I think we'll all use this as a guide in reviewing your draft, so this is very helpful, we appreciate it. I want to just make a quick comment, but first of all, I want to thank the applicant for coming back. I think it's a good gesture to the town that, you know, you're trying to do what's right for the, for the town and for the neighborhood, so I thank you, thank you for that. I, my, my concerns about parking were, if they weren't evident, they, I will make them evident now. I definitely have a concern about not having some portion of the commercial spaces be available to public. I don't necessarily think all twelve do, because I think, as you point out, the business owner and their employees will need a place to park. If, as part of you coming back for the next hearing, you could give some consideration to that and respond to that concern, I would appreciate it. Because I do think that the, not only will it, it help the neighborhood and alleviate some of the concerns about where those customers might park, I think it will ultimately help with the success of a commercial, a commercial unit, to know that their customers will have a place to park that's protected. In the business that I do, you know, I, I see retailers all the time looking to know where their, where their customers are going to be able to park. And so I don't want to design something here with good intentions and then end up with a situation where we have vacant retail. I think that would be the worst case scenario. So I ask you guys a thought to it, and come back to us with some comments on that.
May I make a comment? So I think of all the board members, I'm the closest to this project, I'm down on Central Ave in this vicinity every single day. I'm an economic development practitioner, so I have a special place in my heart for projects that deliver some commercial use, particularly in our business district. I'm very enthusiastic about the project, I want to echo Brian's comments, thank you for bringing it forward. I was not opposed to the forty B proposal. Of course, that wasn't before us, but I didn't have any strong objections to that project, but I think this is much more preferable from a neighborhood development perspective, or a community development, economic development, tax revenue perspective. I hear all of the concerns of the neighbors that spoke, I thought there were a lot of very valid issues, pest control and other things. I have the utmost confidence that we're going to resolve all those issues, hopefully in a timely fashion, and I just want to thank you for coming back. Hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to continue this public hearing until September twenty-second at, Mr. Zawinski?
Uh, so, Brian, excuse me?
Yes.
And what are you planning to hold the hearing open for? What would you like to receive in the, before?
Like, if we're hoping to have a draft special permit, I believe they're going to come back to us with comments about the parking.
So do we have to continue the open, the public meeting?
If the draft permit, you feel that there is additional information required, just holding it open is a good way of doing it. I mean, hopefully the draft permit will address the issues, because we know what the issues are.
Yeah, if there's a question raised as part of the permit submission, I think it's fair to have the public have the opportunity to come back and speak to that again. So I would entertain the motion to continue the special permit hearing to September twenty-second at.
We've got, um, just give me a ten minute.
That's right. Absolutely. What do we have?
We have two forty-five Highland Street at seven fifteen.
Okay.
And it depends on how you want to play it, um, we have.
I don't think it'll be at the time it's scheduled for anyway, so let's just give it.
But we want to, we want to get the order right.
Give it a fifty minute, ten minute tab.
I, I think that doing that, uh, first is fine. Highland Street is, what comes next, what do you want to do next?
We, we could do, we could do, we could do this next, and, and depending on, on how the, the next public hearing goes on Town Forum, whether that's going to be the continuation to September twenty-second, that can just go afterwards.
So you don't think you have any short hearings done beforehand?
Well, I don't think that, I, I, I think that, I think that this one should be shorter than probably the Town Forum.
Seven thirty. Someone move that, please?
This question.
I did have a question.
I didn't.
Did this, this hearing last?
The hearing will remain open for caring.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yes, this is just.
The area.
No.
Yeah, we're going to leave it open in case there are comments, or there's information that come in as part of the application.
So the intent at the next meeting would be to review draft of the special permit?
Right, and if it's in order, uh, I mean, we do have a time element here in that the building is still standing, and that without a permit, we're not going to get, they're not going to go to the CONCON, and the building will continue to stand. So if the special permit, uh, the draft special permit addresses the issues, or can be made to address the issues next time, I would contemplate that we might be able to issue the permit.
So would that require the drafting of it, circulating it, circulating it to the applicant, returning it?
What I suggested was that Tim and I collaborate on doing a draft and getting it out, um, next Friday. A week from this Friday.
So I think, contemplate issuing the permit, we could also contemplate, uh, issuing effectively or voting to sign the permit at our next meeting, subject to the plans coming in appropriately, that, that they're going to reflect whatever's on the permits, and that they feel comfortable moving forward with CONCON, moving forward with those plans.
Well, well, my, my view is that, uh, the, the text can override the permit, the plan.
The document that's concerned.
And if you make it clear what is required, putting it on a plan is not vital if you, if your text says exactly what's needed. So if it's in order, I would.
We'll see where we end up, but I, I hear it's saying.
Okay, I have a question about the destruction.
I don't understand.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? Is there, um, sensitivity to getting something done within this construction season, or are you not limited to demo during the?
Not this season.
Okay.
So there's an open suggestion for a motion on the floor?
So...
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on now to the 745 Polte Homes Special Permit for Cluster Development, Mullet Woods Town Farm Site, continue from August 25. Hey. Three others on stage.
The seating plans that I can share with my neighbors.
We'll start first. Do we have an applicant today? We're going to step forward. Are you here with... Polte? Is he the applicant?
Yes.
All right. I'm getting nervous. Let me check if there's anyone here. Right?
Here you are. I'm going to get this. One left.
Yes. Thank you. Did you want one next? Did you get one?
I know. Thank you.
If it was last, if anybody would like that.
No. It's getting a little...
Is the choker on TV?
I'm not telling you what's in my bag.
How you doing?
They were looking at a staple. We have to figure out what the right thing is.
Is it mine or yours?
That is mine. Whenever you're ready.
Mike, you also? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Mark Mastriani with Polte Homes. Reed Group with Polte Homes is here with me as well. We're the applicant who proposed development of a cluster subdivision off of Governor Stoughton Lane, known as Mullet Woods. And with us tonight is Mike Rosati, again from Marshawn and Associates, who's helping us with the permitting, engineering plan work associated with the project. So since our last meeting, we've continued to work with Lisa Edelston, who's the planning board's stormwater peer review consultant. She's provided us a comprehensive list of comments. Mike and his team continue to work through her comments and we're getting very, very close to being able to respond and provide some feedback to the board. And I think Lisa is planning on being here at the next meeting on the 22nd in order to have a discussion and go over all the stormwater aspects of the project. We also, as requested, we staked a limit of work line in the field at the project site and we hosted a site visit with all members of the planning board, staff, and some members of the public. Based on the feedback that we heard from the last planning board meeting and some feedback that we received on the sidewalk from neighbors, we have adjusted our plans. Mike's been working hard to address comments and revise some aspects of the plans. And one of those things that we've adjusted is the buffer, the 100-foot neighborhood buffer that we spent a lot of time talking about and looking at in the field. We have, Mike has revised the plan and he has that. We have submitted it to the board prior to this meeting. And Mike is prepared to walk through the plan with the board tonight. We also surveyed existing tree locations out at the site, which was a comment that staff has made, Tim had made to us, to see if there were additional trees on site that could be saved or grading allowed. And Mike, again, is prepared to walk through that. We did respond. We did receive a comprehensive technical review from Tim and his staff. And we did prepare a response letter to the board in advance of this meeting. And again, Mike is, will walk through a lot of the aspects of that response. And we certainly can answer and discuss any other aspects of that letter. And I just wanted to mention that we are, we did receive a letter from DPW and Engineering with some additional comments. And we are meeting with Joe and John tomorrow to review some aspects of their comments. And, you know, following that meeting, we'll be prepared to respond back to the board with our responses to that letter as well, which I think we will be ready to discuss at the next meeting. So with that, if it's okay with the board, Mike has some plans and has a presentation to walk through a lot of the plan changes and the engineering responses that he's been working on since last meeting. If that's okay with the board?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So as Mike pointed out, Tim gave you a staff report and the documents that you've received for this meeting sort of were directed in responding to that. But there were other things that we had done. And I'd like to walk you through the plans of the changes that we've made to the plans, which I think are substantial improvement.
Could you just make sure that that is oriented so that everyone can see in the audience if they wish to? Thanks.
Is it going to go up here also, Tim?
Yeah. I love the one like that in the area. So this is what the abutters here. So, Tim, that's a great shot right there.
Excuse me, just one moment. Does that represent Exhibit 7 in our...
That's correct. That's what you're looking at right now. So I'm going to start at Unquity Road and highlight the changes that we've made in the plan. There was comments about the amount of disturbance that we were proposing in the Unquity Road right away. As you know, this is where the access of the subdivision would be. So we asked the DPW and the Building Office also, consulting with the Fire Chief and Police Chief, about a reduction in the pavement width from 24 feet to 20 feet, which we got favorable reviews from. So this plan has been revised to show the 20-foot wide pavement coming into the site. And also, on the edges of the road, we are proposing some retaining walls, terracing, so that we can try to consolidate the limit of the work going through there. And originally, we were, for this portion of the job, we were taking down, I think, 64 trees it was. We are now down to 50, which will be mitigated in these areas. We'll, we intend to submit a landscaping plan specifically for the entrance that will show tree plantings, specific tree plantings to be done in here. And if the DCI requires us, we'll also be enhancing some along the Unquity Road right away. Through the Conservation Commission, we have adjusted the road alignment through this area of the subdivision in an effort to eliminate grading within 25 feet of the isolated wetlands that we have here. And further down station, there's another isolated wetland across from Lot 23, which is right here. So originally, our grading was clipping the edges of these buffer zones and we were asked to try to move the road to eliminate that. So we did. We moved the right-of-way a little bit into Lot 1 and over here towards 23. We incorporated a few small stone walls to keep the grading from the lots spilling into it to allow us to do that. And so as we move up station, we continue with our 8% grade going up to the top of the hill, which will minimize the amount of cutting we need to do. And we come to the cul-de-sac at the top of the hill and we have altered our architecture a little bit in that we now have some buildings that actually have front-load garages instead of side-load garages. This allowed us to consolidate the buildings a little bit better, remove some of the curb cuts along the edge of the cul-de-sac, which was a concern of the DPW as far as snow storage and removal. And it also allowed us to move some of the buildings, especially this one, the backs of the, move the buildings forward to allow for us to give a buffer that was appeasing to the people who live on Countryside Lane. So if you look at this plan here, this line here represents the back of the lot, which is, has been revised to, from the original 20-foot width to 40-feet width to try and make this a little bit more substantial. And we've also added a no-tree cutting area to get us to the 100-foot line, which is this green line that's located below the red. The red is the limit of work that we're proposing with the actual site. And I've also added a note that even though the buffer zone is on the lots and is not intended to, this area is not intended to be cut, it would restrict this in the future for future homeowners to prohibit them from cutting the area also, which I think was a big contention of some of the abutters. So if you, so we tried, we moved everything forward. We changed some of our architecture so that we could do that. And Tim, as we move down towards Lot 23, towards the beginning, you can see that we were not able to complete the buffer zone 100 feet totally in this area here. That is because of the wetland across the street, trying to avoid that. The back of this building was right up against the line. So we tried to minimize that alteration in here with some changes in this architecture and we were able to accomplish an 80-foot restricted area in this area here. Obviously, some of our detention basins in the open space, it's unavoidable for us to be outside that buffer zone, but these are not really the areas where there's homes directly behind us.
I was just going to add, but even though Polte needs to grade or behind that home, will there be restriction in that 100-foot buffer zone?
This one, we cannot provide that right in here because it's actually a backyard. So it would be, it would come down from the 100 feet here to 80 feet here and then back to the 100 from there.
Okay.
We wouldn't be restricting anything in this area in the future after we've created what we need to create for the stormwater so that there would be no need to come back in and do any clearing. So we have this area here and at the very end of the cul-de-sac, Tim, behind Lot Number 12, is also a basin that, right in this area here. We're still working to try and create as much buffer as we can here naturally, but this will occur in the 100-foot buffer zone. This is where the low spot is in the topography and it's really unavoidable. One of the other comments we saw on the sidewalk, Tim, would be by the condo land. We were talking about this detention basin here. We had made a commitment to these people to, at one point, this outlet structure was proposed going in this direction. We proposed to redirect it back towards us. And also, in the sidewalk, there was a number of trees that actually are embedded in the stone wall that even though we showed the grading going up against the lot line here, we are not proposing to cut those trees. We would try to leave those trees embedded in the wall so we didn't have to remove that and would still provide some type of screening for this basin. We are still proposing to landscape on the backside of this basin to try and enhance that screening all along the back here too. So like, as I indicated with the plans, we increased the 40-foot strip from, I mean, the 20-foot buffer zone behind the lots on Countryside to 40 feet. That was also done in response. Tim had a comment about us using the green space in the right-of-way towards the open, the upland open space. So we no longer are relying on that to meet the open space. This 40-foot here satisfied that requirement and that's how we determined that width. We now have just a little over nine acres of upland in the open space when we needed 8.4. So when we were also out on the sidewalk, we were talking about filling. We were talking about this area of the site here where we have filling going on. And I did, I wasn't able to submit a cross-section with the information I gave you last week, but I do have a board for that that shows a cross-section of this filling across here going towards Mulligan's property. I think the concern with this filling was what was happening in this area right here. In other words, at the base of the slope that we're proposing here, was the water going to continue on towards the property and come over the lot line in this area here? So I have now switched to this plan here. So here's this house here, which is that house right there. And I did a cross-section along this lot line right here between the two houses going towards Mr. Mulligan's house. So you can see it comes down from the end of the cul-de-sac here and we have a very steep slope running down this way existing. So we are proposing the driveway to come down rather than, not sharply, but in a more controlled manner. And then we have the house. We have altered our architecture now to be a walkout in the back. In the proposal previous, the grading in the back here was in an in-ground type of condition and we were proposing that only because we were concerned with our architecture and how it affected the building height. We have altered the, we've talked to Polte's architects and we are now able to modify that building so that we can meet the building height requirements with a walkout grade, which will lessen the fill in the back of these homes as a comparison to the Mulligan property. So you can see here as it comes down, we have a small backyard and then a quick slope down to the existing grade. And I've highlighted in pink here the topography. Now, it's at a scale that it's not really showing up that well, but what I'm trying to illustrate here is that the water cannot go back uphill or it kind of has to go back uphill to get, before it gets to Mulligan. This will settle in here and then move to, towards the basin, which is over here. And where, you see this area here, I have not proposed, I have some work going on in here. The existing contours are forming a swale in this section of the job, but right here, I have to make it, I have to fill on the low side of it to make sure that it doesn't go to the right, which it wants to do. It wants to naturally flow across the land and to the right into the wetland that's right here. So we want to make it go straight across and into our pond here before it enters the wetland. So when we're all done with the stormwater design, we will have a situation where the water from the actual development area here will be forced into the basin and treated there before it ends up being discharged into this area here before the Mulligan property. So if these changes that we've come up with is satisfactory to the board and the abutters, we'll, the plans right now are kind of scattered. We'll put them all together and tie up all the loose ends and submit a whole package of plans that are all tied together going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Quickly, I want to just give Tim a chance to quickly go through this if you'd like to or make any comments from staff.
Phil, yeah, I think...
Or sorry, Bill.
I think they did a pretty good job of going through the technical review and addressing a lot of the concerns. I left my binder upstairs unfortunately. It was a little late coming in. But yeah, I think a lot of this... But yeah, I, I, I think, um, a lot of the stuff that came up, especially on the sidewalk in terms of, um, you know, people, people got a chance to see what the, what the buffer actually looked like. Um, you know, the, the, the no, the no, the, the restricted cutting area, I think, um, kind of, uh, addressed some of the concerns that, that were raised there. The, the stormwater, um, drainage issue that I think probably, um, next year will be a, a really good time to discuss those. We'll have our third-party reviewer, um, to, to kinda go over those. Um, and she'll have a chance to, to take a look at, at, at the plans that have been submitted now. And I think, Mike, you've been in contact with her about it.
Yeah, I think at the next meeting, we should have all our issues either resolved or to a point where we'd need some input from everyone on what we think we should, which way we should go anyway. So I think we'll be in good shape.
Cheryl.
Uh, yes. So we've received, uh, a letter from, and the abutter on Countryside Lane. And some of the, um, comments in there are things that, um, I think that, I, are concerning me as well. So I'd like to, again, talk about the amount of cut and fill, particularly in the area you highlighted where you've made some improvements. But if you look at Lot fifteen and fourteen, your new contour coming in towards the back, so I would call like at the top of, of what the neighbors might see is sort of a new hill, is a hundred and thirty-six, whereas the existing grade is a hundred and sixteen. So like twenty feet of fill going up across an area that's a, you said it's a two-in-one slope here? And you just pointed out a slope here.
Yeah, the two-to-one slope is right here.
So this is the one sixteen, I believe, and this is one thirty-six. So across here, these large trees are gonna come down and there's going to be a big slope up. So that, these, uh, abutters here, while you'll have some trees in there, that will be a significant change in where our bylaw asks us to look at, working with the contours and the natural features to the best that we can. I still wonder if you can do a better job of not having to do so much fill into that sort of corner over there. And then also over on lots, uh, seven, let's look to the right of seven, eight. So I think it's where you're cutting down from one thirty-six to, down to one twenty-eight and you're basically moving it over to the left towards Lots four, five, primarily Lots four and five, where, where you were at like a hundred and eight and now you're up at a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-two. So basically, again, sort of shifting it all, which is causing a lot of earthwork, which is causing perhaps more trees than necessary to have to come down. And then you said before, you're trying to balance the cut and fill.
Yeah, in this area here, that really is relative to the fact that the land is sloping across us. So we're trying to create a level pad by filling in some and cutting in the other. But we can look at that to see if we can improve on that.
I would encourage less level pad thinking when you're working on the, the existing topography because, um, I, I, I do think, um, that you can do, as you did over here, make some more improvements to have less of fill. And I still, it's, I'm sorry, it's a little hard for me to tell from here on that section, but if you could shade and if you could cut a few more sections, so if you cut one sort of perpendicular to that, that fill on Lot fifteen, for example, and you did one that cut through Lots four and seven, for example, and you showed what you, the cut in this one color, sort of the fill in another color, I think it would help understand how much is being moved in this area. And then if you would also do a similar kinda cross-section through the entrance drive, so, you know, what's, what we're gonna be looking at there? So how are those retaining walls? What's that sort of, you know, valley or tunnel or whatever gonna look like when you're going through there? I think that would be helpful to understand. And if you would do that also and delineate, you know, where sidewalk and tree, a street tree and street light are gonna go within that, I think would be helpful as well. And even the, uh, location of the, the project sign, um, in that area. Uh, I just think it, it would help us to understand, um, the topographic conditions that are being proposed through there. I do appreciate the, the careful look at the trees along that buffer and the, uh, retention of many more trees and many more significant trees. But I think that's a positive. One of the other things in the, um, letter was, um, the, and the traffic analysis is to comment on pedestrian and bicycles, um, safety on, um, that intersection with Unquity. So if there are a lot of bicyclists who, who do use that, I think it, it would be beneficial to talk about that, to update the traffic study, to address that.
We can do that.
Okay. And then one of the things we've talked about in other projects is, um, this, um, probably we'll have school-aged children who may take a bus and where would the bus go? Is the bus going to come up? And if so, would there be, would there be a waiting spot? Or would they need to come down here and would there need to be a safer waiting spot for, uh, for children? While I'm at it, on Exhibit four, um, this, I think I read in the narrative this was going to be a public street. Is that right? So I guess I would just comment on the street, um, signs that don't meet the standards, this, this town's same standard for street signs. They were all replaced not too long ago. And, um, so there's certain color and font and size, et cetera. So if you would, if we TPW on having that, um, match up. And then, um, with some of these slopes, I guess, I mean, I imagine we looked at with respect to, um, slopes for handicap compliance, but, um, it, I don't know that you've indicated on here, you know, where curb cut would be for handicap, um, access on the sidewalks, for example. So I guess some, that's a detail that you'll be adding.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the handicap ramp, um, we would probably have two of them, one at the end of Unquity Road and one at, uh, the emergency access, I would imagine, to get us, get us off into Governor Stoughton if they wanted to go that way. I don't think there's any sidewalks in Governor Stoughton though, is there?
No.
So just be, in terms of being mindful about people using strollers, et cetera, so they're going to have to go all the way down the road in order to be able to cross the street at a, at curb cut? So maybe there's some consideration for someplace along the way to, to drop it down.
Well, I mean, doesn't, doesn't the driveway?
Dryways, I'd mostly handle that, but we can add something else.
Which is making sure, I mean, and I know the planning space offers some, making sure that, that those slopes of the driveway both go on the curving of the road and then, you know, parallel to it. I just had a little reading on this earlier today. So, um, so those can function as, as curb cuts, but just making sure that it's not like a rollercoaster ride.
Yeah, so relative to handicap accessibility, um, the driveway is going with the road, parallel with the road, obviously would be at eight percent because they're, they're conforming with the grade of the road itself. But, um, we could definitely, um, limit the cross slope a little bit coming off of that in certain areas. So sometimes we can build up the low end of the, if we designate an area crossing the road, we can build up the low end a little bit and flatten out the high end and create a little ledge, if you will. And the, I'd have to speak to Joe about that. Joe Lynch should see if he, how he felt about it, but I'll ask him.
Okay, well, that's, those are my comments for now. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board before we move to the public?
I don't understand why you have to build it up twenty feet if the people on Countryside are at one sixteen, why you need to be at one thirty-six? Why can't you have a little valley?
So I think the lot that we're talking about starts out at one forty at the front and ends up to being one sixteen in the back. That would be this lot right here, I believe. I think the existing grade up in here is high and this is low down in here. So, um, we are trying to make that transition with, um, with cutting in the front and then we're cutting in the back here, but at some point, the topography drops off too steeply for us to maintain a backyard without going into that situation. So you can see here, this, I believe this is the one thirty contour right there and the one sixteen is down here, I think. Mike, am I?
The Lot fifteen looks like it's pretty, pretty, uh...
This is a pretty steep hill, section of this hill right here. So we're, this is a one thirty elevation in the back of the house, which is pretty much at grade. And so the filling is basically to create a backyard area in the back of the house, which we could minimize a little bit by closing maybe a, a stone wall around this area, which would still give them the backyard, but eliminate some of this slope here.
Well, so your high point's over here is just looking down, right?
Yes, right.
So what, but what you've got is the one, the one eighteen contour coming through here and now this is the, the one thirty-six contour, if I've read this correctly.
That's one twenty-eight, I believe, that one there. This is the one thirty.
This is one twenty-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, here's the, represent pretty much like the bottom of the hill. If you were to look at the slope, you know, it goes down a little bit further to one sixteen, but this is relatively flat compared to this slope right here.
But, I think a couple more sections through there will help us understand it.
And I'll, I'll look at that to see if I can lower this a little bit more, to maybe lower this a little bit more. So what we're fighting against is the cul-de-sac being here, um, and that is in like a four-foot cut. And then the grade drops off as we go right through here and we're trying to get the driveway off, from this elevation, down as quick as possible to, to the bottom of the hill. And this isn't a lot of a run, so I, right now, I think I have this close to eight percent or seven percent, something like that. And, um, so I'll get it.
So I, I mean, for example, I don't know if it would help, if you pan down a little bit, Tim? The other way, sorry, uh, so we can see, uh, what, yeah. So for example, where you have this driveway coming in and going on that side, so you've got these confluence of intersections here. Maybe if that one relocated, you'd have less to contend with through there.
In my meeting tomorrow with the DPW, I can come back with an answer on that. I, I had that driveway over here before, uh, and I recently put it here, uh, based on his comments. So I'll, I'll get some more direction from Joe about that.
But would you agree that adds to the complexity by having all of those accessing?
I would prefer not to have that many driveways off of this. So let me see what he has to say and see if I can change that back.
Thank you.
I have another, uh, yes, comment. I mean, if you go off a little bit at Lot fifteen, if, uh, this is an adequate backyard for these houses, it does sort of indicate that if you go down the line, if that amount of space is an adequate backyard, that your, um, some of your backyards in, you know, including the tree cutting area in the backyard is, uh, non-essential because the other houses would seem to have just as adequate backyards as those houses. So I mentioned that just because, as you know, the hundred-foot buffer is a, uh, an issue with a lot of people. And, uh, you now provided forty feet of open space and you have sixty feet of restricted tree cutting area. But if your restricted tree cutting area became open space, your buildings would still have backyards. And, uh, you might, uh, give that, you, you want to, we can have some thought. But, uh, um, it, uh, it seems, you know, if, if a small backyard is adequate, then, uh, uh, it seems to me a hundred-foot buffer of open space is adequate also.
Mr. Chairman, Mike?
Yes.
Can I just respond to that? So I just wanted to walk through the thought process there. So the, the forty-foot open space strip that's being provided enabled us to, to meet the requirements of the cluster bylaw and the open space requirement that's in the cluster bylaw. So that's kind of the thought process on how we ended up at forty feet of open space. But making all of the one hundred-foot buffer part of the open space is not something that we prefer to do and something that we talked about and thought about. Uh, it would be our preference and, and our proposal is, is to keep the lots, to keep the forty, forty-foot open space, cause that complies with the zoning, and then to keep the remaining area as part of the lots. Uh, I think our homeowners and future residents of Milton would prefer more land. They would prefer bigger lots. Even though they can't cut it, there'd be a deed restriction, uh, on their lot and it would be, and they would not be able to use it. I think it's still valuable to them. I think it's still desirable to them. And I think it's, uh, it's something that we discuss and would, would like to keep part of the lot rather than, um, a larger, um, open space than what's required by zoning.
Can you clarify, you just modified your statement a little bit by saying they couldn't use it. So obviously they couldn't be in it, but when you say they can't use it, you, you've designated as restricted tree cutting area, um, could you expand on that a little bit by, by what you mean by they cannot use it?
Yeah, so the, the idea there is that it would be a deed restriction on the lot that, um, will restrict future owners of the homes after Polte is gone to, um, cutting down any additional trees in that area, um, to having any structures in that area. It, it would be a restriction on the, on the lot. There would be no swimming pools in that area. There would be no, uh, anything that required a building permit. It's really essentially a, um, an undisturbed, natural area on the lot that, um, that the homeowners would enjoy.
Okay. I think that helps clarify what your thinking in that area is. Thank you. Do you have your?
As it would be, uh, it's, it's interesting. There's the people on Countryside that they like the, uh, like the view of the woods. And, uh, the new people probably would like the view of the woods.
Exactly. It's a nice, nice situation. Okay. All right, I'm gonna open it up to the public unless the board has anything further at the moment. So I'd ask the applicants to just step back for a moment. And Mr. Sweeney, you'll be recommended, assuming that they've made room for you.
Hey, ma'am. Uh, Bob Sweeney, one fifty-six Woody Road, um, precinct nine, town meeting member and president of the Indian Cliffs Neighborhood Association. I'm gonna make my remarks brief. Prior meeting, I came up here with prepared remarks. Uh, tonight, I just wanna speak briefly in order to give other people the opportunity from my neighborhood to express how they feel. Mr. Mastriani started out tonight by talking about revising the buffer zone based on, uh, input that he received. Uh, his revision was ten-foot. Uh, I just wanna, again, repeat, as somebody who was directly involved in the purchase and sale agreement, twenty-six pages, you wanna know what it says, you just Google Governor Stoughton Trust Purchase and Sale Agreement and that'll give you the correct answer to resolve this issue of a buffer zone. In three different areas in the purchase and sale agreement, it says that the buffer zone will be one hundred foot at a minimum. To me, that's pretty clear and I have trouble accepting Polte's mathematics and they should not be allowed to be playing around with the numbers, twenty, thirty, forty. That's preposterous. And if you take the latest revision, um, there's still a sixty-foot cheat cause forty minus, take away, a hundred minus forty is a sixty. That's what the math says. And I've always said that if there's a, if Polte has a problem with getting their... And I've always said that if there's a, if the Polte has a problem with getting their twenty-three houses in, they always have the opportunity to go to the trustees and talk to them about acquiring some of the additional four acres. That's an option, that's there. Maybe at some point in time, that could be used in order to resolve some of the conflicts. And there's a lot of other issues, it's just that the buffer zone has been the one that's, uh, been the focus of attention. Thank you.
Anybody else, sir?
Evening, Paul O'Connor, twenty-five Quisett Brook Road, on the other side of where you're talking about. Uh, I think we're all still concerned about the water and what's gonna happen with the flow. Uh, we have water in our backyard, uh, in every heavy rain. And if any more gets added in there, it's gonna start, uh, coming into the cellars faster. Many of the houses in Quisett Brook already have sun pumps. And, um, you know, getting a bigger one isn't the answer. Uh, I thought, also, Unquity Road, I'm not sure anybody lives near there, but that's, um, that's a raceway. Uh, and, um, having access in and out of that raceway for people who may not, that are probably my age, will be exciting. So, already a motorcycle went down two weeks ago. A kid got killed there, uh, right near body, so, you know, think of that. If there's another way to get into that property, then fine. And the third thing is during construction, I assume there's some, uh, money put aside for, uh, damage to our houses. Uh, because I've seen a lot of construction happen nearby and crack ceilings, crack walls, all that stuff. And if there's some sort of a guarantee and a bond, it would, I'm sure it'd make me feel better than everybody else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just quickly on the water issue, um, we will be discussing stormwater in detail next week with our peer reviewer, so make sure you're here for that. All right, twenty second.
Sorry, there'll be, uh, some information coming out beforehand of the results of that?
The peer reviews available will be put on the website.
Yeah, uh, so Lisa Eggelston is, is the peer reviewer. Her initial review is, is on the website. If you go to townofmilton.org, right off the front page, Governor Stone Project. Um, I forgot what the title is, but you can find it. Um, she'll have additional comments, and as soon as they come in, we'll be posting those, so just stay tuned.
I'm sorry you break this up, but it's hysterical, last, listening to people saying, we're gonna forbid people cutting down those trees? I've got a chainsaw, you're gonna have the chainsaw police come by and say, oh, you cut down those trees?
Is what?
Anyway, not my problem.
Is what being, is what is being reviewed on the website also?
Yes.
Okay.
All the application documents, uh, the engineering report, stormwater report, um, is all up there. These most recent documents I haven't had a chance to put up, um, they'll be up by tomorrow afternoon.
But people can comment directly on the drainage?
Yes.
They want it.
Covenantating. Well, for sure.
Richard Williams, uh, president of Quisett Brook condominium. Uh, I went on the walk-around that we had, I guess, two weeks ago, and I appreciate it was very, uh, illuminating. And it helped me understand what was going on. And then somebody just answered the question. I looked this afternoon and none of these documents were on the website, so they are there now, which, or they will be tomorrow. Okay, good. I'm still a little bit concerned, uh, because I heard tonight, there's a stone wall that separates Quisett Brook from this, uh, town farm land. And I heard a little bit of a mixed message, we're gonna try to save some trees that might be in this. And I thought I heard when we walked through that we weren't gonna cut down trees. So I don't like the word try to save, I would hope that if they do it, it's say, it's gonna save the trees, not just try, if that's possible. And I think if you walked up there, and I know you all did, you would see, I think they can keep them if they stay on their land. Um, the drainage sounds very good, the catch basin or the detention pond. I, I would love to see it just to confirm that it's trying to direct it away from Quisett Brook, because we do have some water issues in the back of our homes, so if that's occurred, that is great. Um, I think overall, uh, many of us are not opposed to the development as long as it doesn't affect Quisett Brook and water and all of that. I know Unquity Road is a big problem. Somebody mentioned bikes. Uh, you ought to ride on that road at six-thirty in the morning because it is a bikeway. Uh, and it, and even during the day, it gets a lot of use, cause I'm a, an avid biker and I use it myself. So you should look at that. Um, I, you know, it, it is a very busy road. I don't know if there's anything you can do around, about it, but Canton Ave's a busy road, Milton's a cut-through town. Uh, you know, we're, we're, just the way we're situated, and I don't think there's anything you can do about it. But, you know, attention should be paid to that entranceway, because it is a pretty fast road along there, particularly when there's not traffic. So I look forward to seeing all the documents, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
Ed McNeil, seventy-five Countryside Lane. As a layperson, I was impressed the way that you can just move houses around and move the mounds and the roads. And the fact is, is that, may not be a hundred percent pertinent, but as an example, in my backyard alone, I get six deer that climb my fence. My next-door neighbor has nine. So it may not be pertinent to the planning, but for the conservation, that's an area for deer. Some people are happy that they're shooting, others, I just love to see the deer. Now, the writing is, is that I believe that they've had this under agreement since two thousand and eleven. And at minimum, they've probably earned an additional forty percent in profit. Were they to cut back maybe three houses, they could probably satisfy the legal document that they signed with a hundred-foot setback. Satisfy the people on countryside, satisfy all the other people, satisfy the people on the elevations and some of these other properties. And so instead of doing maybe twenty-three, maybe they do twenty. And then they're able to push things back, make it a little bit smaller, keep the value of the town the same. Polte is making, they're worth seven and a half billion dollars on the New York Stock Exchange. They have almost ten thousand houses in reserve. Last year, they sold fifty-six hundred homes. Losing two or three houses to accommodate the quality of the town of Milton wouldn't be the worst thing. The planning board should stand up. You're doing a great job. I can't believe how much it has improved since the last meeting. But I myself, just think for the whole town, that if you sign a document for the hundred-foot setback, you should honor it. And again, I think it was Lynn Sullivan that indicated, you know, you're setting precedence here. And in upper, you get letters all the time from other people, and all the corporations are doing it. And I understand it, if I were in the corporation, if I were in this board, and I was gonna get a bonus predicated on how many homes that I had, I'd push to the limit. But for the quality of the town, and you signed the document, and you signed the document based when, you know, you were gonna be making forty percent less, why don't you just do what you said, cut back the homes a little bit more and accommodate what we want? Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a final question?
My name is Susan Masenzio, I'm at sixteen Preacher Road. And I simply wanna say that I really support everything the gentleman just ahead of me said. He made it simple, clear. He outlined the fact that there's a legal document that has a buffer zone. And if the developer truly wants to do right by the town, they would easily cut back the houses, number of houses.
Ma'am?
Actually, it's a question. Um, Judy Sweeney, twenty-nine Quisett Brook Road, Milton. Um, and I, whether it's addressed at this meeting or the next meeting, it has to do with the drainage area, not necessarily the water. But, um, if you look at these and if you went on a walk, you might have seen there are stakes right up to the property line, right up to the wall on the Quisett Brook property line. So my, my question is, number one, we're gonna talk about the drainage, does a hundred-foot buffer apply to that as well? And where are the trees gonna go that are the natural barrier between that drainage area and the property line in Quisett Brook? So I guess we have, we have a lot of questions, not a lot of answers at this point. There was also a study that was done, there were a whole lot of issues about, you know, the amount of water, um, the hundred-foot flood, for example. So, um, I assume all of that is gonna be talked about at the next meeting?
Yes, it should be addressed in the peer review as well. I'm not sure if I understand your first question, though, about the stake.
Well, if you look, it's staked now, right up to our property line. So that drainage area, you can see orange stakes right up to the property line. So that goes right up to the Quisett Brook property line. There is no hundred-foot buffer, there's not even a two-foot buffer.
Can you just quickly answer, the state that she's referring to, is that a work, is that a stake demonstrating work?
That would be the limit of work for the tree parent to be associated with this basin.
And you're suggesting the buffer zone is a buffer, or the buffer zone would include a detention basin?
That's correct.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Um, I'm not sure. Well, I understood that that all meant.
So essentially, we were trying to define for you what, what the stake meant. The stake meant means that that's where they're gonna be working up until, and the buffer between the Quisett Brook property and, and the Polte property.
Goes beyond that stake or in front of that?
No, it's not beyond it, but it will be on this, the Polte side of it or the town farm side of it.
Okay, so that's just?
Detention basin, but that's where it'll stop. The work will stop.
The work will stop at the stakes?
At the stake.
And the stakes are up to the property line?
That's correct.
Brian, question on that area, are the, are the existing trees not identified in this area?
That's correct, they do not, the most interesting here, um.
There are some that are there?
Yeah, this is, this is tree, pretty
Pretty densely tree.
Secondary growth here, but, um, um.
So can we have you identify the trees of large-scale trees, the, what's that? We, I see there's twenty-fours and twelves and thirty-sixes, so can you identify how many are going to need to come out for that detention basin, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I guess it'll be talked about.
We'll, we'll discuss it more at the end.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we're gonna be publicly open, um, any further questions from the board? Anything the applicant wants to address that was said tonight? Anything else on the board tonight?
One moment here. Could you just explain a little bit how you're changing the topography in, in that area where the neighbors have expressed concern in Quisett Brook?
So in this area right here, um, there is a fence that separates the field that's located here behind, to the, to the right of the
Can you come up and use the microphone?
There's, there's a fence that runs along the top of the hill right here, roughly. Um, that separates this open field from the woodier area here. And as I indicated, the tree growth in this area here is mainly, uh, secondary growth. Um, but there are probably a few trees of bigger, of larger diameter which we'll locate to show you. But most of these are saplings. Um, so when we did, actually, the trees are actually cleared in this area right in here right now from when we did soil testing to, um, anticipating putting, um, stormwater basin in this, the need for stormwater basin in this area. Um, so this, this does slope from, uh, the bottom of the hill, which is roughly where this stone wall is, um, up to the top of the hill where the fence is. And, um, we are cutting this portion of the pond into the side of the hill and filling on the other side, trying to create this basin area here.
And is there any flexibility when the location of the basin, can if you move this way further, the way from that property line?
So we, we have, we are still working on this to try and increase this buffer along here. And that's what I meant when I say we're trying to save more trees in this area. I haven't got a definitive answer yet on that, but we are trying to increase that buffer. We will, unfortunately, the, the way the topography is of the site, there needs to be, to keep the runoff in this, to this wetland right here, which, which comes up in this area right here, which eventually flows onto their property. To keep that runoff the same, we need a basin in this area to do that.
So are you directing water from your pads, um, for the lots? I don't see the numbers, just on the bottom right here. So, is surface water from these lots being directed there?
Tim, if you just pan down a little bit, so, um, I don't, I'm trying to see if the drainage is shown on the road, just a little bit more, Tim. Um, okay, I think I can make it out right here. These, these, the, uh, the roadway slopes uphill to this point right here. So this portion of the road into these catch basins runs down the lot line and into a forbey to, to clarify the water, if you will, and then it runs down into a swale into the, into the basin and
So it's piped to, along that property line?
It's piped to here.
So then it spills up there.
And it discharges onto the ground here. So right in here, this is pretty much at grade in this narrow area here. This is the twenty-five-foot buffer, and this is the back of the, um, dog kennel right in here, animal shelter.
So?
So there's really not enough room here to put something substantial, it had to be moved in that direction.
So you're restricted on the left because of wetlands, is that right?
Yes, this is, this is the edge of wetland right here.
That, that whole basin, that's not the twenty-three acres that they're, that they're
No, but I'm, I just want to understand how much water is being directed there?
So we're getting, we're getting that part of the road and all this area up here in the town's land that comes from these buildings and this, this pavement here. This runs down through the field and over this way here. So this will now all run into this pond, this basin, uh, in the, in the, in the, at, when we're all done.
Right, so is there any, um, alternative way to, to do that, where you pick up some of the town drains on, further over on town property, so you don't have to do so much at that property line?
This is the lowest point where, where we need to collect all the water that, that is coming down to it. Um, if we were to try to put it up in this area here, we wouldn't, we wouldn't collect enough water to make a difference.
That's the naturally lowest point of this property.
That's right.
It also, it also reserves more room for the town in the future, for any development plans the town may have of that, of that area.
Well, I do think neighbors' concerns there need to be thoroughly, um, evaluated by our peers, I've forgotten her name.
Lisa Eggelston.
Yeah, um, because, um, if there is any alternative to being right on that property land there, I think it should be explored, even if it is on, if, even if it does have to, in somewhat, the town farm, or the town maintaining.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little confused as to what the issue is relative to the condominiums. It seems to be located behind the units, which, Tim, if you pan down, um, like there's, these are the buildings for some of the condominiums. And I understand there may be more condominiums down in this area up here. But, um, you know, this area is much higher in elevation than, than this is. So there, this water doesn't affect anything that's happening over here. Um, this is a slope running down to the bottom where the wetland is, and the wetland is down here. So I suspect, even though I don't see the buildings, Tim, does it, should it show anything more beyond that? I don't think the topo goes that far. Um, that's it, right? Uh, you know, as you can see here, this is almost a hundred and fifty feet off the lot line, there is no buildings or anything in here. Um, this is basically a wooded swamp that's, I think, lower than where all the, all the condominiums are.
What's the, what's the catch basin if we talk the infiltration basin there, is that the, is that for overflow?
That is the control structure, which, which is holding back the, the water in the basin, so that we let it out slowly.
Yeah, but there's a catch basin right there, is that?
There's a rim on, there's a, uh, grate on top of it, so that in the case of, uh, uh, blocked pipe or the storm, the hundred-year storm has exceeded, the water will flow in, into that and out the pipe instead of going over the berm. So an emergency, uh, mm-hmm. And we also have this spillway here, so this, if for some reason this basin were to overtop and this couldn't handle it, it would come this way across into the wetland.
Would you say you've done in that area to date, you've just done some flurries?
We had to do, uh, test pits to determine where the groundwater was in this area here, before we could design the pond, or the basin, excuse me.
That's, that's all you've done?
What's that?
That's all you've done in that area? And the only clearing you did is just to get in there?
That's correct.
That's not part of the twenty-three acres?
Not. Not the thirty acres that we're purchasing?
No.
So, I'm just, this question of curiosity, did you go to the, the trust to see if it was all right to go in there and do that? I mean, they still, they, well, they still retain the entire area, but they're gonna continue to retain that area?
Yeah, so this would be an easement on the town's property, this, this.
No, no, I realize that, but when you went in to do the test pits, did you get permission from the trust?
Yes.
The trustees?
Yes. And the conservation commission.
Can I ask a question about the buffer? So, who's gonna own the forty-foot buffer?
The homeowner, so the forty-foot buffer would be part of the open space, uh, and it would be owned by the, uh, the homeowners association. That would be created as part of this, this project.
And so the homeowners of the new project would have access to this, passive recreational access perhaps?
Well, um, not entirely, because we typically don't like to promote people walking in between and behind people's homes, so we would not be encouraging or proposing any, any walking paths or, or access in this, in this land, in that area, in the strips around the homes.
So I guess my thinking is, I'm pleased that you've extended the buffer to one hundred feet. But if you can't build anything in this additional sixty feet anyways, why would there be harm in just extending the buffer? And I understand your explanation, it would be nicer if you could market larger lots. But if you can't do anything with them anyways, other than walk amongst the trees, I mean, is there really a market impact? And I would just like you to think about that a little, because I'm struggling with that explanation.
To your point, I mean, you, you hear about a friend or somebody you don't buy a property, and it's always such a great thing if there's a, if there's a land restriction behind it. You can't build that, right?
Right.
It's like, oh, is it yours? No, but nobody can build it, oh, that's, that's great.
Well, and I'm also just thinking, as a potential property owner, you know, you're.
Is there.
Wonderful you have a hundred-footed tree, so you can't build anything on it anyway, so what do you care if it's restricted open space or if it's part of your plot plan really? I mean, is that really a significant benefit to the owner? I don't, I'm having hard to understand.
It's almost to say, how much land you own.
Right, but aside from that, it's just, it seems to be a very big vote of contention for the neighborhood. I can understand why I'm struggling with the explanation as to why that it couldn't be feasible to include that open space. While it may not be required in your mind, there's only, it's something I'm struggling with.
Just another point to that. Alex, can you help me with this? Is, is some of this open space supposed to be available to public access?
Can be, but we can, we can.
Does the bylaws?
No, it doesn't have to.
Address that.
It doesn't have to.
But does it indicate that it should be?
It indicates that the open space should have some logging, well, public access if it's appropriate, but of course, the planning board can modify that if it's not appropriate. And, uh, this open space right along the lot lines of the people next door is not an appropriate place to put that.
I don't know if the zoning says should.
No.
I think it says can.
May or can, yeah, we talked about this with federal and state states too.
That's correct, and we did, and we concluded, I believe, that unless there are walking paths, there's no, already in it, there's no requirement to provide access, unless there's paths in place or.
There might be some consideration given to where there's part of this open space here, whether there's any, um, habitat viewing of any sort, where this is all gonna be part of the open space, where you can come off the sidewalk, the sidewalk's public, and have some kind of viewing. I don't know if that's something that could be considered as a, as a, an amenity. But really, I mean, what people have said along here and with people's concerns, if you, this, this lot, this, to me, seems crowded. I mean, this plan would be a much nicer plan if that lot were not there and the, that area was distributed across all of these lots and allowed you that one-hundred-foot buffer. And I think then everybody, uh, that lives over here would be much happier.
This lot is which lot?
That one right up there.
This one here?
That one, right. So consider it, I, and, and whether.
Twenty-three.
Yeah, cute, one more.
There it is, you're right, lot twenty-three. I don't know if there's anywhere you can make that up someplace else, um, in, how, this is very restricted. But it certainly would, I think, ease a lot of people's concerns along here. It would give you more room, you know, for the, um, for the paths, you know, and probably less vacaney walls, but.
And, and the fact that you only can get eighty feet in before the backyard is, uh, another reason why you could consider, adjust it.
Right.
Um, just, you know, kind of, a little bit of devil's advocate to, to April's comment, I guess, and to the, to the elephant in the room. You know, I, I guess from my standpoint, um, I, I understand the, the area of the lot and the, and the desire for the homeowners to have a larger lot area that they have a deeded right to, although their deeded right is for use and occupancy and pretty much that's it. You know, I guess, I, I, I hear the neighbor's concern loud and clear on the buffer. What this plan seems to do with the exception of lot twenty-three, which was just being discussed, is provide, uh, while not a deeded buffer, an effective buffer, which is restricting tree cutting, structures, swimming pools, building permitable, anything that requires a building permit. And essentially, I actually heard the word, requires it to be left as undisturbed natural area. So, if this is a semantic situation, I, I can understand the concern, but I guess if the lots were reduced so that they ended at the hundred-foot line and were not allowing or not requiring public access, what will the resulting, what's the difference in the result, I guess is my question? Because ultimately, you're, you're, you're leaving this buffer area in its undisturbed natural area by a deed restriction.
So I, I would say it's the enforcement issue.
Right.
Because it's unenforceable, I mean, it's, it check, it would be incredibly challenging to enforce a homeowner cutting down, with their chainsaw, cutting down a couple of trees in their backyard. You'd have people out there measuring, is this part of your lot, is this part of who's, who's in charge to tell them that they can't do that? Well, now the trees are gone, and now what do you?
What's the diameter, is it an inch or less?
I just feel like that's really the crux of it. I agree with you, I think that the practical implication here, assuming that everybody plays by the rules, is exactly the same, and I'm happy to see it. I just think the enforcement issue is sort of questionable.
Well, you get, you get the all kind of crazy, this, you get, like I said, what if, uh, where does it start? If it's a six-inch diameter tree, I got that now.
And I guess, look, there's all kinds of enforcement mechanisms in place, DEP does it all the time, but if number one twenty-eight, you cut down a tree on number one twenty-eight that's not under the property, you're gonna get a ten thousand dollar fine and, um.
Well, DEP has fewer resources in the town.
No, I hear you, but I'm just saying, you know, let's not fight about resources, discuss resources, but, um, you know, you know, the town has the ability to lean a lot if they're not in compliance, and they can't sell their property if they cut down.
Which is gonna be. They have nothing to do that if it's their private law. I mean, it.
If they're not in conformance with the special permit.
It is, April is, is actually right, there's.
I know, right, I'm not debating whether or not she's right.
Well, thank you.
If you're, uh, if you know you have an easement over your land, uh, who's going to enforce it? If you have a neighbor who, you know, gets a benefit from it, then of course the neighbor will enforce the easement. But, uh, you don't, always, your neighbors aren't always, I mean, it may be when, when you, you do this and I'll let you do that, uh, and.
Until someone new moves in.
What?
Until someone new moves in.
So who's gonna enforce, all right, so let's, let's talk about it the other way. Who's gonna enforce it on the buffer zone? Who's gonna stop someone to go in the woods and cut a tree on the buffer zone?
Right, how are you gonna write the rules?
I'm, I'm asking the question, I'm devil's advocate, I mean.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just explaining what you're getting at, but I, I like, I like putting lights up on my trees. Can I put lights up on these trees?
Of course.
You own them.
I, well, I just, I don't know where they, where they get, restriction, what are the finer guidelines of the restriction? Like I said, what size can I cut? Can I clear every bear around there and just put nice little vaulter on the trees and have a, kind of barren other than the trees that you've designated?
No, it's undisturbed natural area. We put, we put this in permits all the time. We talk about undisturbed natural area and permits all the time. We do it all up and down our subdivisions, we did it on brush over on two or three different permits. So it's, it's something we're, we're familiar with.
So I guess my, my comment wasn't that this would be a solution that was abundantly clear either, but I just feel like it's a little less messy, given that we have two different types of restrictions, that's all. And I just don't, I, I guess I'm sort of wondering, does it matter?
It's an option that the applicant can put forward, but if the applicant doesn't put it forward.
Well, that's what I was.
My question is, what is the real benefit? And I hear the enforceability issue.
And I guess I wasn't saying anything other than I want you to think about it, 'cause I'm struggling with this idea a little. Maybe I can think about it, maybe I don't think about it, we can talk about it.
Maybe they can back for the enforceability comment. I mean, there's a solution, there may be a solution in part of it.
Well, if the condo association is responsible and the, I mean, the permit can do all sorts of things, but if it tries to do all sorts of things with someone other than condo association, it's gonna be, I mean, dealing with twenty-three different homeowners, uh, is, is a tough one for a permit. If they're, well, what we should do is, since Pulte has done hundreds of these things, if they can, uh, maybe produce some, uh, some permit language which would provide for effective enforcement with a home, homeowner retaining ownership. Because I can see that, uh, with the condo association having enforcement responsibility, there are ways to hold their toes to the fire, uh, which would not be easily feasible with individual homeowners.
There's gonna have to be some kind of language in their association, because if this is held in common and you have a tree that needs to come down, the only way you're gonna access the tree is to go through somebody's property in order to take it down, so, I mean, trees don't, will come down, right? And someone could say that that, that tree is going to be, you know, at risk of falling and damaging somebody's property. So there's all sorts of things.
Well, that's another thing, if a tree's that close to your house, I mean, it's the only responsible thing to do, like you said, if it doesn't look too healthy to take it down, and with the closeness of some of these areas. But to your point about Pulte developments in language, and, and also your point about how many bazillions houses they've developed, I, I'd like to see about a dozen examples of language that set up restrictions like this in other locations, whether it's in Minnesota or Toledo or wherever. I mean, I'd like to see where this is.
For an open space?
Well, I'm, it, yeah, it's something simple, just that they, they restricted the deeds, the use of, they have.
I mean, the open space is, is a lot, it's.
No, no, none of the open space, in the sixty feet between the open space and there.
Oh, I'm sixty, sixty, sixty foot each, right.
I'd like to see the language in someplace else that said, you have, you own this land, but you can't touch it.
That, that forty feet is contiguous with, is it parcel two, open space parcel? So obviously, it would be very convenient to go through someone's property, but you could go all the way around if you needed to?
Agreed, but as somebody who has, uh, property with a lot of trees and over time they've been diseased and had to come down to get equipment in to get the tree down is the issue, so, um.
Remember, this is undisturbed, remember, this is undisturbed open area, so this is, this is a, you know, this is an argument we've had up and down brush over on a couple of different projects. Undisturbed open area means you let that tree fall down because it's undisturbed.
Okay, so is that gonna happen in the restricted tree cutting area too?
So do you proper?
No, you can't, because it's, the trees are too close to your house, it's just a lot of.
And then we, and then we get people complaining that.
That it looks terrible.
That, that the open space looks terrible.
Well, and it does look terrible, and, and many people think it does, you know, the lowest estate, so.
It has to be undisturbed except for necessary.
Except for necessary, disturbance, it's, it's a, you, you have to be careful, I hear, we hear about it on the planning board all the time, you have to be careful of unintended consequences. Undisturbed open areas can be very undesirable, because you can't go in and clean them up. And you get invasive species, you get dead trees, you get vines, it's, it can be a real mess. So it's just something that, um.
If there's any hope for any habitat preservation here, if you take out all the undergrowth in here and you only have this forty feet, I mean, I think you're, you're radically, um, affecting any bird habitat or other thing. So, I mean, what's the intended purpose of the hundred-foot buffer? Is it visual, I mean, is it just to have trees and no, no other concern? I, you know, so perhaps, um, Mr. Sweeney or others who were involved in the past, if there was any thought as to what was that to be, undisturbed, to preserve habitat or just to preserve a house getting too close? I, I'd be kind of curious what was thought of when that was set up.
Well, I think we should just be, we should just be careful on the hundred-foot buffer, because the board should be taking the neighbor's concerns about the hundred-foot buffer, what they are, and, and, and let the, let the community speak about what, what their concerns are. But we should be careful about tying their concerns back to the purchase and sale agreement.
Well, are we, we have a letter, a, um, ten-page letter that we received from the butter, and she talks about habitat. And that, that's why I wanna understand the habitat.
You were just, you were just suggesting that we should, that we have to understand the intent of the agreement, and I'm, I'm going to let you know that what we heard from council is that we should take very seriously all the concerns about the buffer being a hundred feet. But the basis of this board's decision should be their concerns about the hundred feet, not what the purchase and sale says.
I'm fine with that, except that a hundred feet we're talking about, you can't take a tree down, do we have to let it fall? To, there's a restricted tree cutting that we don't know how it was enforced. And I think those are radically different impacts and net effects in the end when we're done with this. And so I do think it's important to understand, when neighbors say they want a hundred-foot buffer, they think it's important, that's what was discussed in many meetings in the past. I, I'd just would like a clarification, if the understanding of the hundred-foot buffer was that it is a hundred feet undisturbed and that trees are gonna fall within that. I'd just like to have an understanding if that's kind of what was in people's minds.
I think it's, it's what is visually pleasing, and the rest will fall in there. I had, you know, the undisturbed, I had a, my notes said, undisturbed natural features, which was a little different from what you heard. But there were certain things that wouldn't be disturbed, but it didn't say that no one was going to.
Clear it.
Clean it.
To clean it, and, and it, it doesn't have to be that way. I mean, it can be, the permit can provide for a properly kept, uh, amount of open space. And that's probably what would happen, because if it's properly kept, uh, the birds and the wildlife and, uh, and the visual pleasantness will all, will all fall.
So I guess I would suggest the applicant has now heard a fair amount of discussion on this.
Mm-hmm.
I will put it back on the applicant to respond to all of this.
Sure, you can do that.
Anything else from the board, excuse me? Anything else from the applicant? Public, you can talk next time. Uh, is there anything else from the public this evening? Okay, I would entertain the motion to continue this hearing to September twenty-second at seven forty-five?
Seven second.
On favor, I, I, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Sweeney, I just, I just continued the hearing, Mr. Sweeney.
Didn't you schedule a Henry, uh, hearing on November twenty-two at the same time?
Seven thirty is Smith, is, uh, the time that Henry says.
Well, based on what happened tonight, it's, uh, we'll go over an hour.
You should expect it won't start at seven forty-five, but.
Could we have a?
But the problem is if Henry's for some reason doesn't show up, the board doesn't wanna have to sit here until eight-thirty or something, so.
Mr. Conley will show up.
Will be on television, hopefully.
I just think that we should have a reasonable time for a hearing. Normally, you have a public hearing, you get pretty close to.
This has been discussed at length on the board, and the board has decided that we don't wanna have to wait for hearings in the event that someone doesn't show up for any reason.
So continue, Pulte continued until seven thirty, about nine twenty-two?
That's correct.
Seven forty-seven.
Seven forty, seven, Pulte is seven forty-five, seven forty-five.
Bobby, flare.
Henry's is seven thirty.
What you should do is you should turn on the TV, because we're going to be live, and.
And then don't, and, and, I know, you know, India and Chris are about five, seven minutes from here, so.
And then, you have your car walking up in the driveway.
I appreciate your concern, we've discussed the debate. All right, let's see if we can get Mr. Corcoran done tonight with the seven oh-five hearing, which continued until the end of tonight's meeting for one contingency and subdivision revision, continued from August twenty-fifth. This is going. Um, before we do that, Mr. Corcoran, hold on one minute. Do we have any old business or new business we'd like to discuss? All right, I think you can plan to leave, Cheryl. We will adjourn after our seven forty, seven oh-five meeting. We will adjourn after our seven forty, seven forty-five meeting. You may.
I'll leave.
You may not, you may cancel the application. You can, but then Mr. Corcoran will also have to leave. All right, Del, would you clear the people out?
Come on out here.
Your boss right there. Got work to do.
Move on, move on.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very well. I appreciate, uh, the board continuing the hearing until later this evening. I was at a neighbor meeting in Carberry property. I understand that an email was read inviting the public to a site walk. I'd just like to reiterate that at nine o'clock on Saturday morning.
So, Mr. Corcoran, this is not live tonight. So, um, it'd be helpful if you can try and get that communicated in other mediums as well, perhaps on, uh.
They think they could do it tomorrow?
They, they, they may, but I'm, I'm thinking you could also maybe express it through the Milton neighbors page or something like that.
We, we got, we got, we got an indication that they might try for tomorrow.
All right. I'm suggesting for your own benefit that you help communicate it to the public in other ways.
I appreciate that, we have and we will continue to do that.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
So, um, I think we continued it, continued this hearing on the consale lane subdivision approval so that Alex Whitehead and I would have a chance to sort of review the subdivision approval, the homeowners association trust and other documents to make sure that the documents align with the board's intent, that this would be a way with access specifically, particularly access for, um, emergency vehicles and for utility access, um, on the property. And so there are some modifications to documents that Alex and I agreed to and would just like to highlight if we can, and I would ask the board to approve. I think the most significant one is that there is a new exhibit A, which is, um, up on the wall behind you, which is a deed of easements. And that is a specifically requirement that the, the two homeowners would deed access for maintenance of utilities and access for emergency vehicles, uh, in the consale lane right of way to the town of Milton. So the town of emergency and other responders would have a clear legal right to access consale lane for that purpose. That was left somewhat ambiguous in other documents and we have cleaned up that language. Um, the additionally, uh, language would provide that the proportion of consale lane to be constructed on the Cohane property would have to be undertaken within six months of the, uh, the execution and recording of this document. And, um, uh, in the declaration of trust, we eliminated some language that dealt with some private, um, access and maintenance issues between the property owners. The property owners can agree as to whether how, whether and how each would use the right of way between themselves, uh, but ought not to be, that is not a, um, a public item ought not to be addressed in a, in the document that's approved by this board. Um, and this board really needs to focus on consale lane as a way, uh, and a private way with, with right of public, uh, emergency and other access as necessary in accordance with the law of ways. So those are sort of the, the, the main highlights of modifications that were made. Um, I think they, they, they reflect now what is intended by the board originally when it, when it approved subdivision approval. Uh, and so I would ask the board, obviously if you have any questions, if not, I would ask the board to entertain a motion to approve, um, the revision to subdivision, sign the plans and sign the revised, um, approval document.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Looks good to me.
Any comments from the public? Seeing no comments from the public, I do have a motion. Someone, who ready? And, do I have a second?
Second.
On favor.
One abstention.
Thank you.
Because the hearing started before I go on the board, so we have people to vote.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, uh.
I have pre-confirmed, I have one.
Okay, what did we just vote to do?
We modified the subdivision. Approve the modification to the.
We approved, no, no, we approved the, uh, the.
The approval of revised subdivision.
The revised subdivision, one consale lane.
Correct. So.
And the plan.
They moved for us.
All right, I just wanted to.
We did, I heard, I heard they moved, so.
Be sure, okay, so we're going to, uh, sign this. Now, the, uh, there's an appeal period. But we can file this with the, uh, with the clerk. And then, after the appeal period runs, we then sign the plan. And you're going to have the easement signed and, uh.
That's correct, the homeowners association trust and.
And the homeowners association documents.
So that they can all be recorded on.
All right. That, I think.
Did I give Mr. Corcoran any time? I think six minutes is all set.
He should be able to. It's a one-season job.
All right, and then we're done. We will then be adjourned.
Thank you very much.